Good evening. We're going to call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. If you could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We've got a crowded room. I want to thank all the students that have come out. I know there's lots of stuff going on, so appreciate your being here. Can we get a motion to approve the meeting agenda? Mr. Scher.
I wanted to make a motion to amend the meeting agenda, so just...
So can we get the motion to approve it first, and then we can do that? Motion approved, Ms. Stowe, is there a second? I'll second that. All right, Mr. Scher.
Because we have a broad audience that includes lots of students who are here for a particular item, I'm wondering if we might move that item up. This is item 9A, Cardinal Field Project, and I would propose that it be moved before item 8A. I realize discussion before, but in the interest of disposing the item that the public is... so many people in this room are interested in, and then these students can actually go home and go back to studying, I propose that we move that item up in consideration after the monthly report by the superintendent and officers in committee.
All right, so we're in a little bit of an odd situation because the new members haven't been sworn in yet, so there's actually four voting members at this point until we do the swearing in. I know it's a little odd, but that's what we have to do. So, I understand. So is there a second for that motion? Okay, Ms. Stowe. All right, any discussion? So the motion is to move the first action item up on Cardinal Stadium before the discussion items, and then we would go back to our regularly scheduled agenda. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor? Ms. Olson?
Aye.
All right, so that passes 4-0 because we only have four voting members. We're going to get there. All right, next up, our consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Is the consent agenda amended?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. All those in favor of accepting the agenda as amended? Megan?
Aye.
All right, so that is now before the academic updates. Okay, very good. All right, so is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? Ms. Stowe, a second? I'll second that. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda?
Aye.
So that passes 4-0, thank you very much. All right, so the next item is "At the School: Welcome" from Mr. Mayo.
Oh goodness, look at that. You'd think I knew how to work one of these by now. Anyway, "Good evening Chairman First Dean Superintendent of Schools Dr. Tony Jones, Members of the Greenwich Board of Education Cabinet and Members of our community. Welcome to Greenwich High School. I was going to speak about our recent successes in our AP scores, our NGSS results, the number of students who are identified as National Marriage Scholars, our recent National Honor Society Induction Ceremony, or the 15 athletes who signed a Division One Letter of Intent last week, but I'd rather speak about an event that will take place this Monday and another event that took place last Saturday. We have a service club here at Greenwich High School called Roots and Shoots. This club is involved in many different efforts to serve our community. The one that I would like to focus on and which I find truly amazing is their Thanksgiving Food Drive. This is not your typical food drive because they would be delivering a full Thanksgiving meal to 150 local families in need. This student rugby club works in collaboration with the Department of Social Services to ensure that Thanksgiving may be celebrated by the entire community. The work that goes into this project is unbelievable, and the number of volunteers that make it happen is extraordinary. These students and their advisor are the embodiment of the vision of the graduate as they exceed many of these capacities that are part of that document. These students are in fact doing the following: pursuing their unique interests, passions, and curiosities; contributing to their community through service and leadership; collaborating with others to produce a unified work and heighten the community's understanding of the many people who are in need; generating innovative creative ideas and products; advocating for ideas, causes, and actions; communicating effectively for a given purpose; and exploring, defining, and solving complex problems. These students are just a small representation of the amount of service activities that are taking place at our high school each day. I also want to tell you about an event that took place last Saturday. It was called "Live Like Luke," named after one of our students in grade 10 who has cancer. I didn't know what to expect when I showed up at Greenwich Point for this cleanup, and I was astounded to see 500 adults and students at the point to ensure that the environment was taken care of just like Luke would have wanted it to do himself. These students filled multiple dumpsters with garbage that might have made its way into the sound. Luke Myers inspired our community to take action, and it was an amazing success. So when we hear about students that are disconnected, are not passionate about anything, and are unable to socialize because they are too busy gaming, think back to the students in Roots and Shoots, as well as the students who participate in "Live Like Luke," who care about our community and are working hard to make it a better place to live. These are just two examples... I wish my fingers worked better. These are just two examples of the many reasons that we should all be thankful as we approach the season of giving. Thank you, and enjoy the rest of your evening.
All right, next up is our swearing in ceremonies. If Kim Spazano, who's our Assistant Town Clerk, could come up and help us, and our new board members, if you would step towards the podium, would be sworn in.
Would you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Connecticut, and that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties as a member of the Board of Education of the town of Greenwich to the best of your abilities to help you go?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
They're about to find out what they signed up for. All right, with that, we're going to move on to the election of officers for the purpose of this portion of the meeting. Kathleen Stowe will be the acting secretary, and I'm going to turn it over to her.
All right, thank you Peter. Welcome everyone. Happy to have this whole new board assembled here. So the floor is open for nominations for Chair.
Nomination.
Oh, Megan?
Your last name for Chair.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Christina. All right. Are there any other nominations? Okay. If there are no others, this is now closed. Can you please record your vote on your pads and pass it to me? Karen Kowalski has no vote, abstains. Peter Scher also not voting. Karen Hirsch, she says Chair, yay.
You're supposed to write the names.
So you're supposed to write the names, can you?
That'll be awkward.
Kathleen Stowe voted Peter Bernstein, although it's hard to read my own handwriting. Karen Hirsch, Peter Bernstein. Christina Downey, Peter Bernstein. Joe Kelly, Peter Bernstein. And Peter Bernstein voted for Peter Bernstein. Megan Olson, can you tell me who you...
Peter Bernstein.
Peter Bernstein. Okay, so we have 6-0-0. Congratulations Peter.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask back to you?
Okay, so next up is our election... thank you. Next up is the election of Vice Chair. I'd like to open the floor for nominations. So I would actually like to nominate Kathleen Stowe. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other nominations for Vice Chair? Peter Scher.
I nominate Karen Kowalski for Vice Chair.
Is there a second?
It doesn't need to be a second on nominations.
Historically, we've actually had them, believe it or not. I went back and watched the videotape. Is there a second?
No, I actually read Robert's rules.
Nominate yourself.
No, 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 no. You can't. We operate under Robert's rules. There only needs to be one.
Okay, our practice is different. That's fine, she's got a second. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Hearing none. If you could please mark your pads with the name of the person. Joe Kelly, Kathleen Stowe. Peter Scher, Karen Kowalski. Karen Hirsch, Kathleen Stowe. Karen Kowalski votes for Karen Kowalski. Kathleen Stowe votes for Kathleen Stowe. Peter Bernstein votes for Kathleen Stowe. And Megan?
Kathleen Stowe.
That's six for Kathleen Stowe, two for Karen Kowalski. Congratulations Kathleen.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up is the position of Secretary. Open the floor for nominations for Secretary.
I'd like to nominate Karen Hirsch for Secretary.
I'll second that nomination. Are there any other nominations for Secretary? Hearing none. Close the nominations. All right, if you could cast your ballot on your pad. Peter Scher abstains. Karen Hirsch votes for Karen Hirsch. Kathleen Stowe votes for Karen Hirsch. Christina Downey votes for Karen Hirsch. Joe Kelly votes for Karen Hirsch. Peter Bernstein votes for Karen Hirsch. And Megan?
Karen Hirsch.
Thank you. So the vote is 6-0-0. Congratulations Karen. And the Secretary.
If you give us one minute, we've got to move some folks around.
Thank you for your patience. This is always the awkward moment of the shuffle. Okay, so next up is our public hearing. First up, our GHS Student Government Liaison.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, Dr. Jones and Mr. Mayo. Good evening. I'm Lucas Gazianis, and I'm the Senior Class President of Greenwich High School. So before I get started, let me extend my warmest welcome to the new members of the Board, Ms. Hirsch, Ms. Kowalski, Mr. Kelly, and Ms. Downey. Congratulations on winning your respective campaigns, and I'm thrilled to have the opportunity to work with you for the duration of this school year. So now let's get started. In terms of tonight's meeting agenda, I want to reinforce that my class and the student body of Greenwich High School remain firmly behind the development of the Cardinal Field Project. It can be easy to get lost in months of negotiating and seemingly endless funding obstacles, but I have faith that however the Board ultimately proceeds, it will be in the best interests of providing our students with the finest facilities the district can offer. I'll leave all the members of the high school and the community here tonight to speak on the field project on behalf of themselves. In terms of other news, at the Student Government Executive Committee's Dinner Meeting this month, we had the opportunity to speak with Maureen Benano and Teri Lamancha-Cataldo, the co-presidents of our PTA. We offered our support to their current initiative to redesign the courtyard outside our student center and optimize it for use by the entire school, as well as other projects they're taking on. We had a very productive conversation, and all of ExCom is excited to have an open exchange of ideas with the PTA this year. This past weekend, as Mr. Mayo discussed, the Greenwich High School Environmental Action Club sponsored a beach cleanup in honor of Luke Myers, a sophomore and a passionate environmentalist suffering from glioblastoma and aggressive cancer of the brain. An estimated 1,000 people from all across our student government, our school, and our community flocked to Todd's Point on Saturday morning to pick up trash, rallying behind Luke in an effort to support him and a cause he holds very dear. Zane and I extend our continuous support and well wishes to his family on behalf of the student body, and we're delighted that so many people were able to unite at such a fantastic event. So that concludes my remarks for this evening. Once again, I look forward greatly to working with the new Board this year. So thank you, and with that, please welcome our student body president, Zane Cotter.
Hi. It's working, right?
Yep.
Okay, wonderful. Well, hello Mr. Chairman, Dr. Jones, Members of the Board, Administrators, Parents, Cabinet, and renowned citizens of Greenwich, and students, my brothers and sisters, hello. I welcome you with open arms. I am Zane Cotter, the Student Body President of Greenwich High School. And I would first like to begin by recognizing and grieving the loss of a former GHS student and friend of mine, Matthew Gazell, who passed on November the 10th. I knew Matthew personally through various extracurricular events during our shared time in the high school, and I enjoyed being able to talk to him about virtually anything in our Spanish class last year. He was a bright character with a constant elated energy. He always chose to help and give more than he was given, and he found solace in being an individual that stood out amongst the masses. I pray that our world might evolve into a place where all people may feel welcome and loved, and I swear to myself that I will actively work to make it so. Ladies and gentlemen, if you could please join me in a moment of silence to honor Matthew's Thank you. We have some new friends on the Board tonight. Ms. Downey, Ms. Kowalski, it is an absolute pleasure to meet the both of you. I have very high hopes for the sorts of things that you will accomplish as part of this Board. Ms. Hirsch, a pleasure to see you again, and once again, thank you for lobbying for me to sit with Dr. Jones and Mr. Mayo during the homecoming parade. That was easily the highlight of my high school experience. I would also like to express that I agree with your vision for more stakeholder involvement in community projects, especially since we actually met on a committee of such nature, and I have no doubt that you will excel in your new role. You know, I saved you the best for last. Mr. Kelly, otherwise known as Coach Kelly, as in yes, Coach Kelly, no, Coach Kelly. I'd love to do 20 more push-ups, Coach Kelly. We made it. Feels great, right? For those of you who don't know, I helped Coach Kelly with social media during his campaign, and I have to say that I learned quite a bit about being a leader, a tactful businessman, and a contributor to my community from him. Thank you very much for that experience. In regards to things happening in student government, we actually just passed our first policy proposal of the year on midterm testing. And the proposal essentially promotes the creation of a staggered testing deadline for Marking Period II assessments based on the relative positioning of their midterm assessments, and that might sound very complicated, but theoretically, each student would gain an average of three to five days of study time per class. Seeing as not having enough study time for midterms was one of the largest concerns we received from students during our two-year student survey period, we thought it best to start proposing policy that would optimize the system we have, and that it should be up to a joint committee of students, faculty, and administrators to determine the best course of action in regards to midterms down the line. Altogether, though, I think we're making strides in the right direction. I'd like to end off with a quote that I heard once, or perhaps created myself. "You are your impact. My friends, this is your Board now, and how you use this new responsibility will determine the legacy that you will leave behind to the town. Be strong, be open-minded, be resolute, and win." Thank you.
So thank you, Jonathan, for doing this. And one day Zane's going to be sitting in this seat, I can assure you of that. All right, next up is our GEA Representative, Carol Sutton.
This is the one, right? Okay. Good evening Principal Mayo, Chairman Bernstein, Board Members, Superintendent Jones and Cabinet Members, and so-so many members of the community. It's great to see you here participating. My name is Carol Sutton, and I'm honored to represent 900 members of the Greenwich Education Association as their president. On behalf of the Association, I welcome the new Board Members and congratulate wholeheartedly the recently elected Officers Chairman Bernstein, Vice Chair Stowe, and Secretary Hirsch. We look forward to continuing to work productively with you during your terms and with Dr. Jones as she continues working with you as well. We also this evening want to give a GEA shout-out to the North Mayanis School Community for being named one of 362 National Blue Ribbons Schools. Those kind of results are not possible without the whole community working together with a shared mission and vision. We're thrilled with North Mayanis's accomplishments, and hopefully they represent the district as a whole. So this evening, I'll be speaking on a couple agenda items and a non-agenda item. First, as you know, as you well know, it's budget season for the Greenwich Public Schools. And for the second year, there are only two designated budget meetings, and only one of those includes a public hearing. The Board meeting scheduled before you this evening continues this trend, a trend that the Association believes does not give stakeholders adequate time to provide input. We're interested to hear the discussion of the proposed Board meeting schedule and some type of rationale for it during that part of the meeting. I'd also like to get a head start on the December 5 budget meeting, because there's not adequate time to share, and so I'm going to speak a little bit on the budget. We do recognize that there's some good news. GEA is pleased that the superintendent's budget proposal includes funding for a new site for Windrose. GEA believes that an alternative program needs to have an alternative site, and for a while, there was discussion about bringing it back to Greenwich High School, and we do not believe that that's the place for the alternative program, so thank you for putting that in there. We're also happy that staffing is flat. Of course, we would like staffing to rise because we believe there are needs that aren't being met, however, flat is okay, and maybe we can convince you otherwise. We're also really thrilled that funding is included to continue and to build the new magnet at Western Middle School with Avid. They really deserve that opportunity, and it's been proven to be a wonderful program. We also appreciate the readability of the budget book. For those of you who haven't seen it online, it contains a plethora of information that is extremely important as the Board and the community deliberate its upcoming budget for the next school year. There was some disappointment in the budget proposal, however, and I would like to take the opportunity to highlight a couple of these, and with such a large crowd here, they may not be ones you know about. Last year, there was a significant cut to professional learning for both teachers and administrators, and when that occurred, there was an idea that this will be for one year only. Well, those monies have not been reinstated. Perhaps we shouldn't have been so naive. The monies have not been re-stated, even though expectations for faculty, in fact, for all staff in the Greenwich Public Schools, continue to grow. The need for professional development, both time and money, is greater than ever, so to see that the cut is going to be continued was very disappointing. The second thing that was disappointing is that there are no additional social workers in this budget for the elementary school level. This is my broken record. They have not been included in this proposal, even though our youngest learners are coming to us with more needs than ever before. These are behavioral needs, social and emotional needs, mental health needs, and not just in one neighborhood. This is district-wide. It's actually statewide. At this age, elementary school, the family is the most important social network for that child. It is the most important determinant of their future success, and additional social workers would be headcount, very worth adding. Another thing we were disappointed by, but encouraged that you're discussing this, is to provide an additional guidance counselor and/or administrator for Eastern Middle School. The student body at Eastern Middle School is 225 additional students higher than Western, and 275 to 290 students higher than Central Middle School. For the guidance counselor alone, that's an added load of 75 to 100 additional students. I can't even do that math, how the needs of 75 to 100 additional students would be taken care of by the guidance counselors. The sooner that can be corrected, perhaps even before this budget, the better for everyone. Another aspect that is disappointing the GEA is that the assistant deans at Greenwich High School are still not fully funded. They are funded in the budget book at 2.0, and then we hope that they can evolve. Now evolve, when it comes to assistant deans, is for all intents and purposes robbing Peter to pay Paul. How many professional assistants does it take to round out your assistant deans? These are people who have saved lives, and there shouldn't be any question that the Board would support the full funding of the dean positions. And finally, I just want to say that sadly, the first question from the old Board, a member of the old Board, on November 7th was to Dr. Jones, "How will you get this to 2% from 2.31%?" That was the first question. And this is even though Dr. Jones, in her own words in her executive summary, said, and I quote, "There is growing concern from staff that a 2% year-over-year increase is eroding instructional quality." So I'll just leave that right there. Now, some of you Board Members have heard me and GEA lamenting this 2% many, many times. This is my seventh time, and hopefully other GEA Members will have more to say at the second budget meeting coming up in December. So another thing on the agenda today, which you are actually, I think it's an action item or some calendars, and so on a different note altogether, for 2020-21, GEA supports the superintendent's proposal for a day off on Election Day, a full day off, and we hope you will support her in that. And we hope you will support her in that. If the state of Connecticut continues to be one of only 11 states that has no early voting, maybe that's a matter for you guys to take up with your representatives, this is a very good idea indeed. Teachers will not have childcare issues, because their kids are out of school while they're in professional learning, and everyone can go to the polls for a lesson in civic engagement. Something else that's in the calendar that I want you to just think about and maybe put in the back of your head has to do with the scheduling of elementary school conferences, which in the two budgets before, the two calendars before you, represent a change to three consecutive days in early December, rather than two one week and one the other, which is a little more spread out. There's no consensus among GEA on this change. Some people like the old way, and some people like having it three in a row. What there is, however, consensus on is the efficacy of an early release day on the day of the evening conferences. We took a quick little run around the internet to look at other Fairfield County districts and West Hartford, other schools that we compare ourselves to and that are like us. And what we found is that all the conference days are early release days, they usually have three. We didn't find any evening conferences. And we also found that many, like us, held their conferences in early December, but many others held them in mid-November, and even a couple in late October. And some of the teachers have really, have told me that parents don't want to wait till early December to have their conference, and they're asking for a pre-conference conference. So what does that all mean? It seems that like, maybe it's time for the administration to ask for input from parents and teachers, and if it's warranted, can create a new paradigm for these elementary school conferences, which are extremely important. And finally, I read with interest the policies under the first-read policies for this evening. They were 9311. And I just want to read this out loud. It was under this section of philosophy. It says in the policy, "The Board of Education is committed to excellence in teaching, student achievement, community involvement, and general operations throughout the school district. The Board believes the optimum way in which this commitment may be achieved is through the cooperative use of the talent and wisdom of all the employees of the district. The Board encourages programs of employee involvement, participatory problem-solving, and decision-making processes." We believe that that's true. We hope that when you get to this policy in a couple of meetings, you will pass that through, so it becomes a board policy. And as we approach Thanksgiving, I would just like to close by saying, "The teachers in Greenwich are thankful to work in a district that would adopt and will adopt a policy with this philosophy and value." So thank you very much. Happy Thanksgiving.
All right, so next up, our community com-- oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Cricket Diamond, sorry.
Good evening, Superintendent Jones, Chairman Bernstein, Headmaster Mayo, members of the board, cabinet, and community. My name is Cricket Diamond, President of PTA Council. I begin tonight by welcoming and congratulating the recently elected board members. We congratulate Christina Downey, Karen Hirsch, Joe Kelly, and Karen Kowalski on their election to the Board of Education. All of us at council look forward to working with each member, new and veteran of this board. We also offer congratulations to the new board officers, Chair Peter Bernstein, Vice Chair Kathleen Stowe, and Secretary Karen Hirsch. We look forward to your strong and collaborative leadership. While November typically means gearing up for family time, Thanksgiving feasts, and trying to make the most comprehensive shopping list, so I only have to go to Whole Foods once, it also means it's the start of budget season. Now that the superintendent's budget for fiscal year 2021 has been presented, we welcome the opportunity to engage with the board, as well as the BET and RTM, to support essential capital investments in our schools, our children's education, and ultimately, the fabric of our community. We support the district and board's efforts to ensure that our schools are safe, healthy, and intellectually stimulating environments for our students and staff. It is imperative to not only fund the required maintenance, but it is also necessary to invest in the future of our schools, both in infrastructure and in educational practice. Council would like to thank Superintendent Jones for bringing the budget presentation to our council meeting. We appreciate opportunities to increase parent understanding and involvement, and as such, would like to thank Irene Perisi and all the teachers who have participated in the workshop about personalized learning at the recent Academic Excellence Committee meeting. For those who missed it, it will be available for viewing on the website soon. Relating to engagement and regarding the translation policy first read, council appreciates that the board finds it important to communicate with families and have engagement with families who speak other languages. We are eager to hear more about the commitment the Greenwich Public Schools is able to make to break through language barriers that exist between schools and the parents of students. It is concerning that school-wide communications will not be translated. These documents are often just as critical as district-wide communications. At the same time, we wonder how PTAs provide the same commitment to these families. Additionally, this policy suggests that there is a family engagement plan that considers the needs of parents of limited English proficiency. We hope that such a plan will be developed, one that considers family engagement needs, including translation and much more. Council has long advocated for better family engagement. We are eager to assist the district in developing a better understanding of family engagement and the ways in which it can be put to work to help increase student achievement. Tonight, we look at the ALP Science Program Update and the STEM Report. We wholeheartedly endorse the recommendation of the PTA Council ALP Committee, who will be speaking a little bit later, while we await the results of the ALP review. We support a strong elementary and middle school advanced science curriculum that would meet the needs of students capable of deeper inquiry. Under the current delivery structure, advanced science students are not receiving a challenging personalized curriculum, which is a goal of the strategic plan. We hope that you will give the ALP teachers time and resources to write an ALP science curriculum based on the standards appropriate for ALP students, which would be implemented in fall 2020. In general, the STEM Report documents troubling cuts in the line items for all levels of the math and science programs. It is our hope that you will push to strengthen those programs at all grade levels and not starve them of needed resources. On a side note, we recall that program reports, previously called monitoring reports, required the action of acceptance by the Board of Ed. With the revision in policies, we are wondering if this has changed, as no action is scheduled for this or the humanities report, just the opportunity for further discussion. Council is pleased to have a seat at the table for the Special Education Task Force with Key to Ed that was kicked off on Monday evening. We look forward to proceeding with the process and for the conclusion in March with action steps to improve special education in Greenwich. Regarding Cardinal Stadium, we look forward to the discussion and decisions made tonight. Council has consistently advocated for restrooms, changing facilities, ADA accessibility for the stadium, bleachers, and press box. We are also advocating for a secondary egress and exit to the GHS campus, which will improve traffic flow, increase security, and life safety for students and surrounding neighbors. Speaking of safety, council was pleased to attend the Safety Forum held last night. The safety and security of our schools is extremely important to parents. If you were there, you would understand from the parents that they feel the buildings are not as secure as they would like. It is clear that more funds are needed to secure our buildings. Knowing the Board of Education and town departments understand the importance of protecting our children gives a measure of comfort, and we thank Dr. Jones for coordinating the forum. As we look forward to next week's Thanksgiving break, we would like to thank the board for all that you do for our schools, students, educators, and public school families. We wish you a well-deserved rest and a time of reflection, and maybe I will bump into you at Whole Foods. Thank you.
Thank you, Cricket. You're driven up to the corner back in there. All right, so next up, our community comments. Speakers get three minutes, and we ask you to please adhere to the three minutes. We will be timing you. You'll get a note at 30 seconds, and then we'll stop you at three minutes. We ask you to be respectful of everybody's time, but also be respectful. We've got a number of speakers signed up on the stadium and some on reusable trays, and then we'll see if there's anybody else that wants to address the board. So first up would be Maureen Banano.
And Peter, probably be easiest if people walk down the middle. It's a little tight over here, but--
Yep, okay. And after Maureen is Rob Burton, just to get you queued up.
Good evening, Chairman Bernstein, Superintendent Dr. Jones, VOE members, cabinet members, community members. A warm welcome and congratulations to our new board members. I'm Maureen Banano, GHS PTA co-president. Before I speak about our agenda item, I just want to take the opportunity to give you an update on the GHS PTA. Our year has been off to a great start. We had a very successful membership campaign, which is still underway. We currently have close to 1,200 members, including faculty and parents. We are at 45% participation and still holding out hope for that 100%. And you may have heard about our recent fundraiser at Richards, Paint the Town Red, which was a huge success. Between those two events, we have raised close to $170,000 for our students. So with this generous support by our members, we have helped fund over $21,000 so far in enriching and engaging field trips for over 900 Greenwich High School students. An amazing opportunity recently came up for the entire 10th grade to visit FDR's Presidential Library as an enrichment to their social studies curriculum. With GHS's financial support, that trip will occur this December. Additionally, we have funded so far $3,800 for AP exam fees and SAT/ACT test prep for students with financial need, and $2,400 in school improvements. That's just, you know, until now, so we have a lot more to go. On December 10th, along with the Greenwich High School guidance staff, the PTA will host the college process, what every parent should know about planning for and applying to college. So we hope everybody can join us for this important topic. So now to the agenda item. It's very timely that you're here at Greenwich High School for this important vote on Cardinal Field. We look forward to a safer, more inviting, and accessible facility for our student athletes, parents, and fans. We are incredibly proud of our Greenwich High School teachers, administrators, and students, and the work that they do, their accomplishments, and the amazing community they have created at Greenwich High School. We believe that every aspect of Greenwich High School should be a source of pride, including our facilities. So we look forward to having Cardinal Field as another source of pride in the near future. And lastly, I want to thank Dr. Jones for holding the Safety Forum last night. Parents were obviously passionate about this topic. I do want to touch on two real concerns for parents of Greenwich High School. The lack of cellphone service around the fields and in the parking lot. It's a real concern for our parents. I also want to touch on the--
It's time.
Oh, sorry. About the design of the front entrance way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so our next speaker is Rob Burton, followed by Steph Cowie.
All right, good evening, everyone. For those who don't know me, I'm Rob Burton. I'm a lifelong Greenwich Town resident, 1993 Greenwich High School graduate, grew up playing football on the same fields that we're talking about tonight. I stand here before you tonight not only as a parent, alumni, youth coach, taxpayer, but also president of the Greenwich Athletic Foundation and over 3,300 members of the community who signed our petition. The GAF was founded in its predecessor's organizations over 20 years ago. We've donated to this community multiple times. But over the last two years, we have collaborated with the Board of Education, other town departments to collaborate with projects, including a new sound system for Camel Rink, new bleachers for the Greenwich High School Gymnasium, a brand-new state-of-the-art scoreboard for Cardinal Field, and most recently provided a substantial gift to shore up the dilapidated bleachers at Cardinal Stadium. To date, we have gifted close to half a million dollars to the town of Greenwich to improve our athletic facilities, and we pledge to raise $1 million to facilitate a new Cardinal Stadium. We've also worked closely with the administration the past few weeks to develop a comprehensive plan for Cardinal Stadium. Our revisions to Option B take in considerations and concerns that were brought to our attention by members of the community, including adding handicap parking, adding ADA and emergency vehicle accessibility, and adding long-overdue restrooms, while at the same time trying to maximize space underneath the bleacher facilities, team locker rooms, bathroom, storage, and educational space. Besides being fiscally prudent, our plan has widespread support in the community, as over 3,300 members have signed our petition to our revised plan. We also have the support of new first selectman Fred Camillo, countless members of both the BET and RTM, as well as support by our student athletes, many who are in attention in here tonight. Please stand up and be recognized, folks. We really appreciate your support. We strongly urge the Board of Education to approve the motion as presented. We believe that this work can happen quickly, and the GAF stands ready to assist Dr. Jones, the entire administration, to rapidly complete this work. The time is now to improve Cardinal Stadium. We've gotten 50 years, 50 years, out of the current bleachers. Now is the time to give our student athletes the facilities that they deserve, but also facilities that are on par with the neighboring communities. The time is now to fix the AD issues that many members of our community do not have the ability to watch their student athletes perform on the field and intend to ride of passive events such as graduation. It'd be a shame for another class of GHS students to graduate with substandard facilities. On behalf of the entire GAF, our student athletes, over 3,300 members of the community, I urge the Board of Education to approve the motion before you tonight. The GAF stands ready not to support this project monetarily, but is also willing to donate our time and expertise in seeing this project--
Thank you very much.
Thank you for consideration.
So our next speaker is Stephanie Cowie, followed by Michael Chambers.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Jones, Board of Ed Chairman, and I'm over here. There you go. Peter Bernstein and its members, my name is Steph Cowie, and I'm the proud mom of a freshman Cardinal football player. I'd like to share a personal view, so to speak, as to why yes on Cardinal Stadium proposal. The Rick Hansen Foundation on Accessibility states, "Whether disability is caused by natural effects of aging or by an accident or injury, the simple truth is that each of us will experience disability at some point in our lives. We need our communities and our spaces to be accessible so that we can continue to participate and live full lives. The Cardinal Stadium proposal is the opportunity to provide decent, accessible sports facilities for our athletes and our greater community." A disabled blogger friend of mine, Cody Darnell, said it best, and I quote, "There are some things in life you have to experience firsthand to truly comprehend, the sudden understanding that the society, you are now considered less important solely because of physical abilities you have absolutely no control over," is one of those things. Firsthand, I experiences every time I come to Cardinal Stadium. I want to paint a picture for all of you. Also, my view is a lot like sitting right here. I want to paint a picture, first, the exhausting role to the stadium from the handicap parking spaces by the gym. I challenge any one of you in this room to try this in a wheelchair. Once I arrive at the stadium, I go by myself to the fence to watch the game. I am no longer part of the experience. Many times, I say to myself, "Why am I even here? Why did I even attend? Your friends and family are in the stands together for this contest." I look back at everyone, and I do all I can not to break down and cry. I am alone, I am isolated, and quite honestly devastated. I watch the game through a fence, not over, through a fence. I try my best to be a spectator and active participant in this contest. The harsh realization is there is no place for someone like me, and I'm not alone. Let's be an example to communities around us. We need a stadium that is safe, inclusive, and accessible for all. As I like to say, we need to be a town of Abel. And thank you to the Greenwich Athletic Foundation for all of your support through all this. Thank you.
Thank you, Steph. All right, our next speaker is Michael Chambers, followed by Alan Gunsberg. Mr. Chambers?
Coming.
Okay. I know, hard to get through.
Good evening, folks. Thank you for the opportunity to stand before you and give you these words in favor of the stadium. I've done this many times before, and so I'll try to be brief. I think the room speaks for itself. We've heard time and time again that the athletic families have not come out-- and you could see that's no longer the case. I don't believe this is a case of being ignored, but it is a case of being neglected. That stadium stands as one of the centerpieces to this town. It supports athletes, it supports youth athletes, it supports graduation, it supports running clubs, and for some reason, we have a stadium that can't take care of the entire town, that can't provide bathroom facilities to anyone, much less someone who has disabilities. The time has come where we have to look at what's fair and equitable, and I've said this before. And the athletic facilities in this town have been ignored, and it's tragic, it's absolutely tragic, that residents of the town now have to step in and take care of infrastructure that the town has a task of taking care of. So that said, I stand here before you and I ask you to do the right thing tonight. Let's do the funding for the stadium, let's get it right once and for all. Thank you.
So next up is Alan Gunsberg, followed by Laura Costin.
I come to you as a disabled member of the community, a taxpayer, and the Board Chairman of the First Selectmen's Advisory Committee for People with Disabilities. And I was very concerned as I read the town, the newspaper, a couple of weeks ago, where it looked to me like Gus Lundin and your architect were both saying that we could accommodate people who need to get from parking to the stadium. Title II of the A D A does not allow for accommodations. Accommodations are only allowed in Title I, which have to do with employment. If there's no parking at the stadium, the stadium will not be compliant. And if the stadium is not compliant, then we've really wasted time and effort. I hope that you guys look at the law and realize what needs to be done here and put together a stadium that can be used by everybody in our town. Thank you.
All right, so next up is Laura Costin, followed by Joan Stewart Pratt.
Good evening, members of the Board, Superintendent and guests. My name is Laura Costin. I wear a few different hats in this town, but I am here tonight as a resident, a taxpayer and a mom of three children in the public schools, and I know you are going to vote on the recommended motion that was circulated as it relates to Cardinal Stadium. The presentation given by K G and D at last month's meeting was concerning to me because while the stadium has many features that make it itself accessible, its location is not accessible and golf carts are not an acceptable solution to accessibility. So I'm encouraged by this motion, I fully support it, and I hope that as this committee that's being formed with this motion, I hope that you will include somebody from the town's disability, hopefully the town's disability coordinator, or someone from the First Selectmen's Committee on People with Disabilities. The A D A is the law, it's not a guideline or a suggestion. Features like accessible parking and bathrooms should have been included all along in every draft over the past four years. So I implore you now to please get it right and to please move quickly. Thank you.
The next speaker is Joan Stewart Pratt, followed by Genevieve McQuillan.
Good evening, everyone, thank you. My name is Joan Stewart Pratt. Fifty-two years ago, I moved into my home across the street, right behind the bleachers at the football field. Essentially, my backyard is the other side of the post road. Forty-two years ago, I was the quarterback for the girls' powder puff football team here at Greenwich High. Forty-one years ago, my mother sat proudly in the bleachers to watch me graduate. I remember it was a beautiful sunny day, like it was yesterday. I still envision all the beautiful red and white balloons. I still live in the same house since graduating college, and my husband, who was born in Greenwich, and I decided we would remain there at such a wonderful location. I believe nobody is closer to this football field than I am, not only physically, but also emotionally. So many fond memories. Greenwich High School Stadium should be a highlight of this town, just as our beautiful beaches, parks and other amenities are, so that all of our residents and visitors can enjoy. I am here tonight to say that my husband and I fully support the Greenwich Athletic, sorry, did I lose the mic?
No, you're good, you're just a little loud, that's all.
I'm sorry.
You're a little close.
I've been told that before. I am here tonight to say that we fully support the Greenwich Athletic Foundation Plan F, and I encourage the Board of Ed to do the same. However, there's just one item I just want for the record, is that we do not support, and a lot of my neighbors do not support, talk that has been going around, that they're going, someone is going to install another traffic light somewhere between Overlook Drive and Hillside. And for the record, myself and my husband and a number of our neighbors do not approve of another traffic light being installed. And for people who don't know, who haven't been here as long as we have, or as long as I have, there used to be a third light. When you come off Indianfield Road, it used to be three traffic lights before you make a left onto Overlook. Now it's only two. I don't remember when that light was removed, but it was removed because of the heavy traffic. This was over 20, 30 years ago. The traffic now is even more, so I would please encourage whoever the powers that be are that make these plans to do the right thing about traffic or divert roads through Hillside. Thank you.
So the next speaker is Julie Deschamps, followed by Nerlin Pearson. Genevieve McQuillan, sorry. She's on the other sheet.
On behalf of the Environmental Action Club, I would like to thank the Board of Education for giving us the opportunity to speak today. My name is Genevieve McQuillan. Our club works to protect and conserve the environment in our community and beyond. Our goal is to educate and empower students to become active in the issues they're passionate about. We have hosted successful beach cleanups, led composting programs at Greenwich High School, raised money for Earth Week, and have spread awareness to faculty and students about their environmental impact. We are here today to support a transition towards the use of reusable dishware and implementation of a dishwashing system. New Lebanon Elementary School has successfully introduced this proposed model, which can be instituted at all of the other elementary, middle and high schools in the district. Currently at Greenwich High School, about 400,000 single-use, non-recyclable sandwich trays are used each year. This excessive waste creates an unnecessary cost to the town and to the environment.
Hi, I'm Monica Woley. I'm also in the E I C, Environmental Action Club. And at Greenwich High School, $45,000 are spent on just standard trays alone every year, and this cost doesn't even include delivery to the school or transportation to the dump, ones they leave as garbage bags. Our proposal is to bring reusable dishware, such as stainless steel trays, to the school district, and this would save the town hundreds of thousands of dollars each year if this was throughout the whole school district. Talking cost-wise about these reusable trays and washing machines, the price would be relatively low initially, and they would pay for themselves shortly.
Hi, I'm Caitlin, also in the Environmental Action Club, and I wanted to bring up an example in our own community. New Lebanon, an elementary school in Greenwich, Connecticut, has been the kickstart for implementing new environmentally conscious programs. Starting May 13th of 2019, they started using reusable metal trays and dishwashers instead of single-use items. With this new program, New Lebanon has reduced their trash by 80%, producing only five trash bags in one week, with no recorded appreciation of electric or water bills. New Lebanon has been a model that other schools can now replicate.
Hi, I'm Emily Harfroth, and I'd like to speak about two schools in Minnesota that have also implemented new reusable trays. So they set up waste sorting stations, reusable trays and utensils, and then racks and carts for storage. Instead of buying, they had a 44% reduction in life cycle greenhouse gases, and they saved, they could result in saving $23,000, and their net use of water and electricity actually didn't change the magnitude of the environmental benefits, so take that into consideration.
Greenwich schools have had the opportunity to be on the forefront of sustainability and education. Our school system can serve as a model for others and will catch the attention of those interested in the environment. Biology, environmental science, chemistry and other classes at the high school have taught students about climate change pollution and the environment, and through these programs we can apply this knowledge on a local level in the schools and within the staff and the students. Thank you.
Time. All right, next up Julie Deschamps, followed by Nerlin Pearson.
Congratulations and welcome to the new board members, and thank you to the Board and Dr. Jones for your consideration of the reusable service ware proposal. My name is Julie Deschamps, and I serve on the Greenwich Recycling Advisory Board. Over the past year, you've heard me speak many, many times about the need for a more responsible solution for our food ware in our school cafeterias. While the elimination of styrofoam trays is to be applauded, the disposable wares currently in use are not the answer. Over a million single-use products, molded fiber trays, paper boats, plastic utensils, portion cups and straws were purchased last year to the tune of almost $62,000. The majority of these items were tossed in the trash to be incinerated at a cost to taxpayers and a detriment of our air and soil quality. Trash disposal is not free. It is estimated that disposables generated in our cafeterias fill about 19 tractor trailers at a cost of over $39,000 each year. In addition, there is an educational disconnect. The overabundance of single-use products and the waste they produce is inconsistent with classroom lessons on civic responsibility, sustainable living and environmental stewardship. As one town leader wrote to you, "Any disposable tray demonstrates that wastefulness is okay. We owe it to our children to practice what we preach and make responsible choices for our future." There is a better way: reusables. Durable products like stainless steel trays and utensils are designed for thousands of uses, not just one. They don't contribute to our waste stream, so there are savings from disposal and purchasing over $100,000 a year. The use of durable wares also model the values expoused in the classroom. Since the last business meeting, the Food Service Committee has worked diligently on a new proposal featuring a central kitchen model for cleaning and sanitizing these wares. This is in place of the original plan to install individual dishwashers at each school, an expensive and challenging proposition. I hope you have all received the report outlining the details and budget of the new plan, or will shortly. Like our student speakers, I urge you to end our throwaway cafeteria culture and make the most responsible decision for our budget, environment and children's education by supporting this proposed plan and by approving the line item for a reusable ware system. Thank you.
All right, next up is Nerlin Pearson, followed by Allison Walsh. Nerlin?
Good evening, Superintendent Jones, Chairman Bernstein, members of the Board. Congratulations to the new board members and administrators. My name is Nerlin Pearson, and I am co-chair of the P TAC Health and Wellness Committee. Since it's budget season, we think it's important as a committee to voice our support for the new proposal of the reusable food ware and centralized dishwashing system in our district. Countless hours of volunteer time is being spent in cafeteria lunchrooms throughout our district, educating students on the importance of recycling and eliminating waste. Students are being taught to value natural resources and practice environmental stewardship. As leaders of our community, we ask for your continued support and commitment by approving the necessary funding to make reusable ware in our schools a reality for the 2021 school year. We're asking you, the administration and our town leaders, to become part of the movement that is already taking place in the Greenwich School cafeterias, a movement that is focused on protecting our students' health, protecting our community's environment and reducing waste and cost in our town. Thank you.
So the next speaker is Allison Walsh, followed by Grace Turner.
Good evening Chairman and members of the Board. I'm Allison Walsh, and I am a co-chair of the Green Schools Committee of the P TAC, and I'm here to also ask for your support for this budget item to include dishwashers in certain of our schools and to reduce the single-use paper or plastic waste that we're generating every day and the costs as well. In the long term, there's not really a good reason to continue using single-use items of any kind from an environmental perspective and an educational perspective. We all, I will speak for all of us, as adults, grew up in a disposable culture. We didn't create it, but we perpetuated it. I think anybody who went to college in the United States, you know, if you think about all the red solo cups, sitting somewhere in a landfill, you know, before recycling, we have to think about all of that stuff. You know, it's contaminating our water, it's contaminating our air, and we need to move away from it. And if we want our kids to be lifelong learners, as we do, we have to also be willing to learn and move ahead and make progress. And, you know, I think it's not just penny wise, but pound foolish to continue using single-use products. It's just not wise at all economically or from an educational perspective or from an environmental perspective. So I urge you to support this great initiative. Thank you.
All right, next up is Grace Turner. Grace is the last speaker signed up. If there are other people that want to address the Board on agenda or non-agenda items, I'd ask you to stand to the side and we'll take you. Okay, Grace is going to pass. So if there's somebody that would like to address the Board on agenda or non-agenda item, we'll take you. Yeah, please.
Thank you. Hello.
If you could state your name when, oh, we have additional speakers signed up. Did you, you already sign up or? Okay, Erin, if you want to bring those forward.
Sure.
Good evening Chairman Bernstein, Superintendent Dr. Jones, V O E members, Cabinet members and community members. A warm welcome and congratulations to our new board members. I am Terry Lamantia, G H S P T A co-president, and I just have a short comment this evening. An additional safety concern has been raised by our parents regarding the lack of cellphone service and Wi-Fi coverage in the parking lots and fields. There have been many suggestions from parents to place a cell tower somewhere in the new stadium, getting Wi-Fi boosters or putting a system in similar to blue light phones on college campuses. We hope that you can consider that as we move forward with Cardinal Stadium. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have a couple of people signed up, and one of them is a student. Sophia Large, if you want to come down first.
My name is Sophia Large. I'm in sixth grade at Western Middle School, and by the time I go to Greenwich High School, I would really appreciate... However, the implementation has also caused a problem in that the format of the Elementary ALP Science Program has shifted from a three-day hybrid pull-out model to a push-in model for most of the schools in the 2018 to 2019 school year. We eagerly await the final recommendations from the external review of the ALP program in March or April of 2020, as this should greatly inform the way that the ALP Science Program should be structured for the following year. Speaking with many parents of advanced learners, there's a lot of concern that the push-in ALP model has now continued into the second year. Previously, many advanced science learners got about 90 minutes of advanced science instructions per week. However, many of these students are getting much less time now under the current model. Some are only currently getting one 30-minute class a week, as the ALP specialist is often spread between three different classrooms. We've also heard anecdotes of some advanced learners even receiving less time with a specialist because there's much more complicated scheduling inherent with push-in models. Last year's budgetary pressures have also hampered the ability for the ALP Science Specialist to collaborate with the general ed, uh, classroom teachers to effectively deliver the NGSS content. While the ALP review is going to come out in March or April of 2020, you, the board, is already hard at work on the 2020 to 2021 budget. We urge the board to consider funding to make ALP Elementary Science Program akin to that of the Math Program, a full five-day-a-week pull-out program for next year. The format would have numerous benefits, three of which are as follows. First, it would eliminate the difficulties of coordination between the ALP Specialist and the general classroom teachers. Secondly, it would also provide a faster response to changes in the curriculums that are inevitable in fast-changing fields. It's interesting to note, for example, how easily the Math Program, uh, Math ALP Program, being a five-day-a-week full pull-up program, was able to handle the transition to the Common Core. Thirdly, and most importantly, it, a full five-day-a-week pull-out program would allow advanced learners to dig much more deeply and with greater breadth into a subject that will be important for many of their futures. Thank you.
The last speaker here is Sally Davies. Sally? Is there anybody else that wishes to address the board on an agenda or non-agenda item? All right, hearing none, we're going to close the. Yeah, please. Just come on up and state your name. It might be easier.
Hi, my name is Helen Filmit. I'm a senior here and I want to say I support the, um, actions for more sustainable use and creative solutions in the high school. I haven't seen a lot of change happen and there are students sitting in the back doing their homework, waiting patiently for change and constantly making suggestions. So I urge you to be creative and consider it with your thoughts regarding what students say. Um, in addition, I want to, um, sorry, I would like to, I don't really know how the process works, but I wanted to talk about being more mindful and, um, sorry, addressing stress and mental health in the high school in a more clear and diligent way. I recently learned that one of my friends from last year committed suicide in his first year of college. And I think, I'm a representative of student government, but a lot of the things we hear is there's always a stress breakout group, there's always a group of students working to try and figure out solutions to, um, de-stress the high school and be more aware of mental health issues. All I'm saying is we need more help from adults in this situation and more guidance with teachers, educating and educating students by their peers. Thank you.
With that, we're going to close our community comments and move on to our superintendent report.
Well, much of what I had on my list has already been mentioned, so it's going to be very short. Um, we do have reusable ware and dishwashers in the current, uh, proposed superintendent's budget. So I just want to make sure those of you who have been advocating for that, it's in the capital budget. So it is, so it's a little bit harder to see in there, but it is in the budget. Uh, we hosted a kindergarten meeting for our incoming and new kindergarteners and met a lot of our new families, uh, which was the second time we've hosted that, and that was an excellent evening. Um, I do want to mention that Key to Ed, I know somebody mentioned it as well, the Devising Seminar Task Force for Special Education. We held our first meeting, it was an excellent meeting, lots of input, and we will be hosting more, but we also will be having, uh, putting out more information for the community because there will be an opportunity for those who want, um, to speak with the consultants in an anonymous way if they choose to offer their opinion to the consultants. Um, the safety forum last night was excellent, we took away a lot of great information. Uh, the chief of police was with us as well, and so we were already addressing some of those issues today, so I just want the parents to know that we're there, that we heard you. Um, and last but not least, I'll just, um, mention also North Mayanis did travel to Washington, DC. Thank you for Dr. Anne Cariglow for going with North Mayanis to be honored for a blue ribbon. So thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so next up is reports of officers, committees, and liaisons, I think, PGC.
Can I do that? It's fine. I never have been over like eight years.
I should go ahead with that and go.
This is fine. You can hear me, can't you? Okay, thank you. All right, I have a lot to say. I have a lot of, a lot of updates, all these committees I'm now on. Um, so PGC, let me just say, Gaetan, are you here? She's back there behind me, she's my moral support. And Barbara O'Neil literally were working until five o'clock tonight. So they served us for a really long time and just didn't know how to stop. So, um, I just wanted to give them a shout out because they prepared me so well for all of this and I'm a little bit sad to be the only person left on this committee. But, um, moving forward, I wanted to say that Gaetan was good enough to send out to the board a policy committee annual report tonight and will be posted on board docs hopefully after this. Um, and one of the things I think that should be noted is that over the past two years, which these two spearheaded, um, we've transitioned completely decay policies and we now have adopted 350 policies. So that is huge. Um, what is left is really just one section, and that's all the zeros, which is the missions, goals, and objectives. Um, of course, we now, that means that we now have to go through the process of deleting some of our old policies because they are duplicative. And that we are going to begin, and that is in the annual report, so I encourage the board to look at that. Um, that's for PGC. Since I'm sitting here, I'll also update you on the Athletic Field Study Committee, which I am working with the Parks and Recs Department on. Ralph Mayo was good enough to put me on that committee last year, thank you so much. And, um, the, the good news is that we have just selected, um, a consultant that we're going to be working with, Weston and Sampson, and we will have an org meeting shortly with them, and then I'll certainly update you on the process after that. And last but not least, obviously, I'm not the chair, but Peter and I are the only two that remain on the budget committee right now, and so I just thought I'd let you know that we have met twice and we're hopefully providing the administration some guidance on operating in capital. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'll just, as Chair, say, you won't be alone on the committees, so for the board members, I'll be sending out a link to a survey, um, listing out all of the committee positions. I'll ask that you please return it as soon as possible. We will put it on the next available agenda because we really do a lot of our work in committees and those committees report back to the board so that we can take action. So look out for that link, I'll try to get it out in the next day or two, and then please be quick with replying. What I then do is bring that list back to the board and I'll probably call you and ask for, you know, thoughts on, on things as we go through it. Uh, the other item is, uh, we're going to do some orientation for the new board members. Uh, Dr. Jones and I have already kind of started talking about that, we'll get that scheduled. We have some upcoming board professional developments, we may be able to use some of that time to do that, as not to add additional meetings to your life. Trust me, you're going to have a lot of meetings in your life. Um, with that, we'll move on. So, uh, we moved the Cardinal Stadium action item up. If you give me one second, I'll just look at my computer.
Yes. Unless you've got one, go ahead. Well, I just wanted to initiate that there are important two things. Distinguished Teachers Awards. Uh, deadline for nominations is March, March 12th, and May 5th will be the Distinguished Teachers Awards Ceremony. So mark your calendar for, um, those two things. And I also just had a question, I wanted to ask Dr. Jones, um, because she brought up the Key to Ed. I just wanted to ask about, um, I know that UConn was dropped because unforeseen scheduling conflict, I just wondered if there was any more information as to why the switch other than just scheduling conflict.
We were actually, um, already going to be working with Key to Ed and, um, it wasn't actually a scheduling conflict, it's, um, for personal reasons on the consultant's behalf.
I don't understand that. Can you say more about that?
I was confused because the email said unforeseen scheduling conflict, so I just didn't know. So the scheduling, so it wasn't a scheduling conflict then, you're saying?
It, it was the consultant, personal reasons for that. Yes.
I, I'm, yeah, whoever's got serious. Um, Dr. Jones, can you, I, I'm confused by that, by the relationship between Key to Ed and, and the UConn work. What, I didn't understand that relationship that Ms. Alson was talking about.
I think she was just asking, she was thinking we switched gears. We always had the UConn and Key to Ed, which is what we had presented at the meeting, previous meeting. And I think, I believe if I understand her question, she's asking what happened to the UConn professor that was working with us.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but just, just by way, I mean, we can talk about this when we get the schedule. The special education review such as it is, it's, it's kind of ad hoc, right? For, this predates you, Tony. There were some of us who were advocating for a comprehensive review, there were others who were kind of piecemealing, for lack of a better term. I understood that the first step, which was a small step, not a comprehensive review, was to get some consulting, a review and consulting from, uh, the NEAG School at the University of Connecticut, and that they were supposed to be reporting out shortly. Correct?
We were hoping that we were going to be able to work with the professor. We actually started the process, did, did you want to add?
No. Before we get there.
Yeah, we actually started the process. We weren't getting as quick of a response as what we would like. We also, uh, put a survey together and working with the subcommittee for the PTAC Special Education Committee, but, um, there was not a lot of satisfaction with the survey, wanted a lot of changes. Um, and it was not going in the direction we wanted because we weren't getting the response from University of Connecticut for personal reasons for the professor.
Okay. Considering that thing's been going on for months, that's kind of, okay. And then Key to Ed, which you sent the other day, their specialty is quite narrow from their own, uh, their, their specialty is, I mean, I don't want to get into specialty, but we need to hear this because I will tell you, we've been through this drill before without you being here. And what, when the board has talked about having a comprehensive review of the program, and more often than not, it's been narrowed by the administration. And, um, in a lot of cases, it winds up being a review of very small elements of process. For example, Key to Ed, as I understand it, I appreciate you sending it out the other day, when I look at it, their specialty, their stated specialty is a particular approach and model for conducting PPT process, uh, IAP and PPT processes. It's not comprehensive, it's a narrow part of essentially the process. Good nonetheless, but, um, I guess at some point, I'm interested in getting, what is the full picture of the plan? Because this feels very piecemeal. And, um, considering we've been calling for essentially review of this program now, this is the, this will be the third year, it's, uh, it seems to me to be important that, um, this whole review is somehow reset and properly presented to the board in a comprehensive way of what the new plan is, given that the consultant that was retained by the University of Connecticut is unable to support the program or whatever. I, I think I'd like to get a, a more comprehensive picture if, at some point, if we could.
I can certainly go back through it. I think what we sent out to the community was actually very comprehensive in literally the dates, what was going to happen, how, what's happening this year. I think very much the input that we get from the community is going to be very helpful for us to understand where are the challenges and what are the celebrations and what are the challenges, so that when you go into a study, if you just have an open book, are they looking at the financial aspect, are they looking at the programmatic aspects? We're going to learn a lot from the Key to Ed process and especially when they're talking, um, to members of our community, our special education parents, and also parents that may have gone through the process but not have children in special education.
With all due respect, um, I think that's a great idea. Better engagement with special education parents is a fantastic idea. Those of us as board members, I can, those of you who have not been here before, with anyone, Barbara O'Neil and other, uh, we've all been stopped more times than we can count in the supermarket by a special education person, tell it parent, telling a horrible story. It's been going on for so long, over a number of years long before you arrived. Comprehensiveness is good, uh, it's really overdue, so, uh, speed is important.
All right, thank you. We're going to move on to, and Peter, I've noted for agenda planning, I think we should put some time on for that. We're going to move on to Cardinal Stadium, so I'm going to read a motion, and I've modified it a little bit from what was on the cover sheet, I'll explain why once I've made the motion. This is an action item, we make a motion, we put it on the table, and we have our discussion. All right, so I move that the Board of Education direct the superintendent to establish a feasibility and design study committee to recommend a final design for a vote by the Board of Education. Such design shall include ADA accessible spaces, including home bleachers, visitor bleachers, and press box with elevator. In addition, the design should utilize the, under the bleacher spaces to include two T rooms, accessible male and female public toilet rooms, storage concession, concession space, and one referee room. Such design shall account for ADA and emergency vehicle access and parking in and out of the Cardinal Stadium area. Finally, such design shall also include new lights on existing poles and all site and utilities work necessary. The feasibility and design study committee will be run by the Chief Operating Officer of the District and include the following representatives: a member of the Board of Education, the District Facility Director, the District Athletic Director, the GHS Headmaster, a representative of the BET, a representative of the RTM, a representative of the Parks and Recreation Department, a representative of the Planning and Zoning Department, a representative of the Public Works Department, a representative of the Greenwich Athletic Foundation, uh, the Greenwich ADA Coordinator, or in the alternative, a member of the First Selectmen's Advisory Committee for People with Disabilities and other designees as determined by, and, as determined and appointed by the superintendent. Is there a second for that motion? Ms. Stowe, Mr. Chair? All right, so, uh, I'll kick off the discussion. Basically, we've had multiple designs. Uh, the latest work that we saw at our last meeting was about using the space under the bleachers. That design is not complete, it's a 60% design. Since then, additional work has been done by members of the community, including GAF, for potentially using space also under the visitor bleachers. That design is not presently before us, we really don't have a, a complete design before us. Uh, there was a committee in existence, Mr. Chair, I took your suggestion about formalizing such committee. I looked to the charter for how building committees usually are structured, obviously added in the athletic, um, components like the Athletic Director and, uh, the Parks and Rec Department, given the space and how it would be used, with the thought that this committee needs to finish the work. We saw a, a 60% design, we understand there's, there's potential for using space under the visitor bleachers. Uh, this is a directive to the superintendent to have that committee go finalize- Education, the district facility director, the district athletic director, the GHS headmaster, a representative of the BET, a representative of the RTM, a representative of the Parks and Recreation Department, a representative of the Planning and Zoning Department, a representative of the Public Works Department, a representative of the Greenwich Athletic Foundation, the Greenwich ADA Coordinator, or in the alternative, a member of the First Selectmen's Advisory Committee for People with Disabilities, and other designees as determined by, as determined and appointed by the superintendent. Is there a second for that motion? Ms. Stowe? Mr. Scher? All right. So I'll kick off the discussion. Basically, we've had multiple designs. The latest work that we saw at our last meeting was about using the space under the bleachers. That design is not complete. It's a 60% design. Since then, additional work has been done by members of the community, including GAF, for potentially using space also under the visitor bleachers. That design is not presently before us. We really don't have a complete design before us. There was a committee in existence. Mr. Scher, I took your suggestion about formalizing such committee. I looked to the charter for how building committees usually are structured. Obviously, added in the athletic components, like the athletic director and the Parks and Rec Department, given the space and how it would be used, with the thought that this committee needs to finish the work. We saw a 60% design. We understand there's potential for using space under the visitor bleachers. This is a directive to the superintendent to have that committee go finalize a design, potentially using space under both sides, coming back to this board for a vote on the final design. But the elements are as were in Plan F, and potentially in what people have called, in the community have called Plan F+, about using space under both of the bleachers. I think this accomplishes our goal. I will say, I've got some concerns about the timing, because obviously, I think it'll be universal. We would like this sooner than later. So I'll defer to others for now, but I am going to ask that question about how long it would take to get this committee work done, the design complete, because we will need pricing information when we submit the budget to the First Selectmen. Mr. Scher?
I think this is great, obviously. I was a little disappointed. I thought tonight we'd actually be voting to go, but we're not going to be, but this is probably a better plan. So I support it. I have three quick questions. One is, I'm going to trump your question, Peter, but I'm glad you asked it, is the timing. I'm really concerned that this could burn up. Look, I'll gladly burn up a couple extra months to get it right. I am concerned, though, in the world that I come from, Dr. Jones, stuff like this is done in days or weeks. I have adjusted, every time I come in this room, I have adjusted my frame of mind that there's no such things as days, there's rarely things as weeks, it's mostly months and years. But I'm wondering if I could bring the administration to the world that most of us live in, which is days and weeks. So my question really is, how quickly could this committee complete its, or do you anticipate this committee could complete its work? And a proposal could be before the board for a vote, and sending on to the other approving bodies, so we can get the project started?
We do have KGND here tonight. I might ask him to actually answer that question.
Okay, sure.
And probably get a better answer.
Russ, if you want to come on down.
Russ, you thought you were having Thanksgiving and Christmas, now you're not.
New Year's in Greenwich is lovely.
You can grow the beard back. Think about that.
I'll get you a mic.
And I don't know what final, final means. My question was more on the point of, when could we get to a step in the process where we could vote on a proposal and a budget? I imagine there's lots of design stuff that has to happen, that could happen afterwards.
Christine, are you adding to that point before Russ speaks? Go ahead.
Yeah, because the time, I agree with you on the timing issue, because I don't know if it's feasible to set deadlines because of the budgeting process. So I'd like to hear.
When the real world creeps into our.
Well, I think we're up to the eighth option, so there's pretty much nothing we haven't explored. So I think it's a matter of the, how soon can the committee make a decision on how they want to achieve it? And how much money do you want to spend? Because, you know, the original options that were presented had all the features you're talking about and more, and the issue was, they weren't funded by BET, not that they weren't proposed. So, you know, I think the building under the visitors' bleachers has some possibilities, but there are some other options, too. And handicap parking is an absolute must. It was included in all the original plans. It just wasn't funded in the BET phase plan. So we're happy to look at it. We'll be really quick. We've got all the information. There's nothing we haven't looked at. The real question is, how soon can your committee make a decision and a commitment?
So, I guess, thanks, Russ. I feel like I'm having chicken or egg. So is that a month? Is it six weeks? Is it?
You'd have to ask the committee, but we can come to you with all sorts of sketch options. We have all the baseline information for budgets. I would think this is something that could be done. I live in your world where things are done in days and weeks, so we're happy to do this, you know, before the new year, in the two or three meeting cycle. And I think that's how you should do it. What we would call a charrette. Do it quickly.
Just to baseline, basically, the First Selectmen, we've got to get our budget to the First Selectmen, but it goes before the BET. I want to say that, I'm going to only get Leslie Moore here. Do you remember the date of the budget hearing with, for the Board of Ed?
For the fiscal '21.
Yes.
It's January 31.
Right. So we have a limited window, obviously. The pressure is on to get this group constructed, working, and back to us.
Okay, we talked about this in the Budget Committee the other day. Here's the snag with that, Peter, just on timing. I think, I don't know, somebody's got to decide this. This budget is part, this project, as scoped here, is partially funded already, right? So we, as a board, would need to ask for an addition of some size, 2 million, 4 million, who knows what, right? So the point that I was trying to make is, I would hope we would go and ask for this as an interim, because if we put it in our budget, money would not become necessarily available, depending on how much money is needed and when. It's not available till July 1. This is a project that has to begin as soon as possible. So I guess I'm leaving open the possibility, don't ask for money you can't consume, but at the same time, I would think we would ask for all of this and let the BET tell us, no, I want you to put it in your 2021 proposal, or I want you to do. For me, I guess I'm just trying to say, no. Speed, quickly, decision soon, progress, break ground, MI, faster, quicker. I could, I thought we were smelling the project for tonight, now I realize that the pie's going to be at Christmas, maybe. I'm still hungry.
Ms. Downey.
And to the budget point, because that was going to be my point, is, the question is, is what if we have the committee comes back with a plan, and we're saying a plan that is more than we feel we can spend, or that we feel comfortable spending or estimate? I just don't know if we have the parameters, you know, if we do the second side of the stadium, if we do the visitors' bleachers, what the incremental cost, like, we kind of all have that 6.1 number in our head, but if it turns out to be 9.1? I'm just playing, you know, we don't know, because, and so, would it behoove us to set a cap? I'm just asking for the committee to say not to exceed a certain number. I'm just throwing it out there for consideration.
Yeah. And I'm kind of where Peter is. I mean, I looked at, I went back, and I actually met with GAF, because I wanted to see what they had done. I looked back at the numbers that the cost estimator and KGND had provided us. Basically, I think you're looking at another million and change to do the bleachers on the other side. You'll have to do additional site work for a road, if that's for the accessibility, and that bridge, which I think could be a significant cost item, would need to be increased to allow for car traffic, if the traffic is coming from the school versus coming off of the post road. So that's something that's got to be forward. Ms. Kelly?
First things first, how long is it going to take us to put this committee together?
I mean, I'll look to the superintendent. She's got the list of names.
I have a sound working on tomorrow.
Ms. Stowe?
Is this working, Aaron? Okay, thank you. I, you know, we did talk about this in the budget. I think that this committee is probably comprises, hopefully, now, everyone in the community that can give us a sense. And for example, for the BET, like, you made that comment, Russ, that, you know, we didn't have a BET can then shoot it down. Well, at least if we have a member from the BET, they, obviously, they're not going to speak for all 12, but they can give us a sense, right? And a member of the RTM, and everybody else, selectmen. I think that speed, but having everyone in the room, hopefully combined, and we sort of set a December 31 deadline, and, you know, we're making decisions in the new year. That would be a good way to start, 2021.
Ms. Olson, did you want to say anything? Just to make sure we're.
No, I think I'm completely on board. I think it's, I think it's something that needs to be done, and needs to be done right, needs to be done fast, so I'm 100% on board.
Mr. Scher?
Are we done with timing? Because I have two other questions. We done with timing?
Let me just add to the timing aspect for one second. So basically, it is our practice to take things up at one board meeting, allow for public comment, and then vote at a second meeting. For the sake of speed, I just want to highlight this to board members, we may want to schedule a separate public forum to get the plan, so that we can then take it up at our next meeting. So just be aware that may be coming for your calendar. Ms. Kowalski? Yep? Okay. A lot of shaking heads. All right. Moving on from timing, oops, Ms. Hirsch?
I just had a process question, being that the board had voted on Plan B, I don't even remember how many years ago. Do we have to remove, change that vote?
Well, that's my next question.
Should we remove this one?
So, so, once I think we have the final design, that's what we would certainly do. I don't think you would remove that until you have the final design. Because that funding that you talked about, Peter, is based off of that plan, and until we have a new plan in place, I'd be worried about the signal we send that we don't need the funding anymore.
Well, that's really my question, is, because the original plan was a three-phase 19, I saw 19, I've seen 22, who knows what the number is. It's a big double-digit number, close to 20 million. So my question is, how does this, how does this relate? Because I guess what this is, is this is a modification of what is known in that, I don't even know what it's called, Plan B, Option B, whatever the hell it's called, that was voted on by this board. It had three phases in it. This is essentially refining what is kind of more or less Phase 1. So then there were Phase 2. Phase 2 was tennis courts and roads, right? Phase 3 was a field house that we may or may not need anymore, right? So my question really is, just for point of clarification, do I understand this properly? This committee is essentially redesigning Phase 1 to complete it, so we can finally vote on it. Is that correct?
That's the spirit I wrote it in.
Okay. My last question is, is a technical question, because I'm interested in speed. Does anybody know, and maybe the answer is no, does anybody know if we can have a representative for planning and zoning? That seems to me to be a potential conflict of interest. I would not want this, I would not want to include them at this phase, so then when we go for the approval, the whole process comes to a grinding halt, because there is a conflict of interest, objection from someone in the neighborhood who I could think of who lives right next door. So, and by the way, if you're on that email distribution list, it's a joy. But if, I'm just, I'm now paying attention to details, because I'm like, speed, speed, speed.
I can, I can answer that question for you, Peter, so.
You already checked?
I wish we could write a check.
You already checked with council?
I did, and I can tell you that the practice, we actually, we will recheck with town council. They will probably need to be a non-voting member. If you look at the town charter for building committees, there are members from planning and zoning and other town bodies.
That's kind of an after-approval thing, right?
It is not an after-approval thing. For New Lebanon specifically, we actually have someone from the planning and zoning department, who's been amazingly helpful to have at the table, is a non-voting member, but is at the table with us, so they're able to kind of help, help us directionally be in the place we need to be in. So I think they may need to be a non-voting member, but I believe they can be a member of the committee. That is the structure that is in the town charter.
Okay.
Now, we'll get that cleared through town council. It just says that they'd be a member of the committee. We'll figure out whether they get a vote or not.
I don't, I don't mind them being on it. I'm just like paying attention to details to get to end of job. I feel like, oh, my God. Using the football analogy, we're in the red zone, folks, you know, but we're unfortunately at the, at the 20 in the red zone. We're not at the 3. And I'm interested to get to the 3 over the goal line super quickly.
Can I just have a question? In the budget, do we have the rental of the temporary bleachers covered through this construction process in there? Then perhaps we need to add it in.
Either add it in, or I don't know. I'm sure our GAF friends are still in the audience, so I'm sure they're listening to the conversation.
The check runs out January 1.
We will, we will obviously connect with our friends at GAF to see if we can get some additional help there. All right. Ms. Stowe? Oh, all right. Ms. Stowe's calling the question. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All right. That passes 8-0. Thank you very much, and we look forward to hearing from the committee sooner than later. Thank you very much for everybody that came out and supported, especially the students. We always appreciate that. We're going to move on to our discussion items. So the first is the academic curriculum update on STEM. Ms. Parisi?
Good evening, and welcome, and congratulations, also from us, to our new partners in education, our new board members. And congratulations, Peter Bernstein is the board chair. We appreciate the consistency in the board leadership. In your board packet, you have the academic report for STEM. This is also followed by the NGSS science curriculum update and the ALP science update. Combined, these provide a comprehensive overview of the components of our district science and math program, and also show you the combined consistency, coherence, and illustrate our commitment to ensuring all learners K-12 have access to a rigorous, relevant, future-ready, and a fun learning experience. I have the privilege to have Sheila Saval with us, our STEM program coordinator, as well as Dana Talata, our math partner administrator here at the high school, John DeLuca, science program administrator, Bonnie O'Regan, our ALP facilitator, and we have many other teachers with us, our teacher colleagues. I'll introduce them in a moment. They will be presenting and sharing the impact on their practice and impact on students. So to orient the board, this report is presented in six sections with a leading program summary. You'll also notice the, there's an inclusion of just our outline and an overview. Our program goals is in Section 1, and that begins on page 3. Section 2, the cost, which begins on page 4, the cost of the program. Section 3 is the achievement and accomplishments. And you'll notice that there is, much like the humanities report, there's a common data set with grade-by-grade analysis that begins on page 8. This is then followed by our next section, which speaks to the program activities that outlines the curriculum work, the professional learning, and the portfolio of resources that we continue to develop for our learners, adults, and students. And we also include a glossary to support the vocabulary that's embedded in the report. I will now ask Ms. Saval to share some of the key highlights with you from our STEM report.
Thank you. I'd like to share three critical takeaways from this report this year. The first is achievement, the second is administrative professional learning, and the third is renewal of the portfolio of resources. Although the scores are still embargoed by the state of Connecticut, data from the 2019 NGSS assessment indicated that at every level, which is grade 5, grade 8, and 11, all GPS students have scored, GPS students have scored above proficiency for all disciplinary core ideas, which are the content standards. So we're very pleased about that. We're looking forward to sharing more information as the state allows us to. In the math SBA, 72.6 of GPS students scored at a level 3 or 4, which is an increase of 1.2 percentage points. The largest increase was in grade 7. 74.8% of students scored at a level 3 or 4, which was an increase of 5.4 points. 50% of grade 4 students scored at a level 4, which is defined as demonstrating advanced progress toward mastery of mathematics, knowledge, and skills. 56.6 of GPS students met their state growth targets, which is an increase of 2.1 percentage points. GPS students as a whole achieved an average of 73.8% of their growth targets, which is also an increase of 2.3 percentage points. This year, we did, we have already held three administrative professional learning sessions, and the goal of that was to develop the capacity to understand and support the NGSS standards and the implementation. Two sessions were held for elementary principals, one on October 25th, and the other on November 12th, and we held a session for middle school principals on November 13th. Each session consisted Each session consisted of an overview of the lesson, putting it in context with the standards themselves. NGSS looked for us, that administrators could look to see what teachers and students should be doing, and a debrief with the teachers. We have two of those teachers here with us tonight who will be speaking to you, Tyler McCossey from Western Middle School and Christina Klepper, grade five at Glenville, so they taught the demo lessons and they'll be speaking to you a little bit later. The feedback has been very positive, and we are planning to run three more in the spring. We are also holding pop-up PD for administrators, these are short, quick, one-hour sessions. We held one on NGSS data, understanding your NGSS data at Oak Ridge School, Irene and I facilitated that. So we are going to be holding them on other topics throughout the year. Resources in math and science to support curriculum, excuse me, implementation across the district include professional learning for teachers and administrators, curriculum digital and physical resources, instructional coaching, examples of that are demo lessons and unit planning, and walkthroughs with administrators. We have several new resources in math, we have model playlists, new pacing guides with unwrapped standards, and new fluency and word problem resources. New science resources are used to link the science and the math curricula, providing students with two different contexts to explore mathematical concepts, and complete activities designed to promote data literacy. That is a cornerstone of the NGSS standards and also the assessment. In the K-12 science curriculum, measurement and data math standards are embedded in the foundational lessons in many of our units. In grades four to eleven, we are using a Tuva resource, which will help our students complete activities in data analysis. At the high school, we have Gizmos, we have AP Text data sets, and we use the New York Times data sets. In grade three, we are field testing modified Tuva activities. In professional learning, when we're looking to develop professional learning for both administrators and teachers, the feedback loop is critical for us, and we have a very strong feedback loop, we get a lot of data from that. As a result of walkthroughs and teacher feedback, Greg Tang spent time with six of our elementary schools to focus on fluency and word problems. The 2019 curriculum renewal included new fluency and word problem resources. Uses of these resources has the potential to increase our math and science achievement.
So we can answer any questions you may have?
Discussion? Discussion?
We can, if you'd like us to continue with the three, that's up to you.
We could have them present everything, and then, we're taking the STEM report. I would like to do this one report at a time, because there's a difference between them.
Between STEM and math?
No, 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 STEM includes science and math, the next report was about the curriculum change.
The science.
The science. So we're on discussion item eight A.
The three are interconnected, but we can do whatever makes the most sense for you.
Go ahead. So for a while, our long-term goal has basically been to integrate math-science technology, right, to truly bring STEM. So I think we're about three-plus years into it, or around three years into it, we've got another year coming. Have we started to see any gains or losses from that integration? Are we, how are we measuring the success of that?
Well, the, there's no singular assessment to measure the integration of the two, there's two separate statewide assessments, but through the work of our local assessments, yes, we are seeing the benefit. And when you, when you look at the, the results of the math assessment and NGSS, there is, there's an alignment, if you, the scores are relatively the same, so however students performed in mathematics also aligns with how they're performing in science. So we know where the scores are that much higher, that there's a clear connection or integration of that data literacy piece and that vocabulary, that work, that the students are making those deep connections. That's one component of it, but if you want to speak a little further too.
Students have more consistent opportunities to deal with data sets, and as we look, as we look, as they're taking these assessments, many of the questions have data sets in them, so we're teaching the students how to look at patterns and trends in both mathematics and science. Because one of the problems we had found in the past was, students would study something in math, and we'd introduce it to them in science in a science context, and they say, well, we've never had that before. So we're trying to show them where it fits in and where they link together, which is also set in a real-world scenario. Because if we teach it in an abstract way, they don't remember it and they can't apply it.
Ms. Sherr.
Thank you, Sheila, I mean, I.
Just got to get a little, pull a little closer.
Okay. The, I understood that part. So I understood that the whole concept of STEM is, it's an interdisciplinary learning, right? These subjects were taught separately, hopefully they were lent. Most students, you can't do science if you, this we can get away with in biology, but in most sciences, you can't get away with it if you don't have the core math, it just doesn't work, right? And that hasn't changed, so, but the idea of getting the integration, which was the national concept of STEM, was, but to Mr. Bernstein's question, to the degree that we're now, you know, three years into doing that, right? Where would I find evidence that that integration had improved student performance in the individual disciplines? Because I realize they're still being assessed individually, but you would have expected that if it was, one was reinforcing the other, right? It would kind of be, what's that, that Japanese Kung Fu game, but in backwards, you're going up? You know, it would seem to me you would go up on both sides, and I didn't see the evidence of that. By the way, I don't want to be critical, because I always like scores going up, right? And we've had some wins here. I was interested in understanding that, because, you know, then the question begs the question of, what's really working? What's actually moving the needle? And what could we, not to use too many cliches in one sentence, is, how can we put more wood behind which arrows to keep that thing accelerating at a faster pace? One or two points is great, and I always celebrate it, but I'm looking for one, two, and three points over years, right? So we look back over two or three years and we said, wow, we went up ten points. You know, to me, that's moving the needle. And I wasn't, I was, I was trying to understand what levers are actually working, and to what degree STEM is actually working to move science performance up and mathematic performance up.
We are in the initial year for the NGSS assessment, but the fact that our students are above proficiency in every single content standard, that's significant.
Sheila, I didn't understand that, because I looked at this and I see, am I looking at the wrong data? When you say content, content standard, because I, I see.
We can't present that data yet, because it's still embargoed by the state.
Yeah, but the thing, I guess I was saying is, is that the state publishes performance standards. Do I, am I, do I have no science data in here?
We don't have any science data.
Never mind. Okay, I'll scratch that question, because that means I misread the math. I misread the math. I have another question, but I'll yield to.
Ms. Stowe?
The one thing too, is that we developed these activities over the past summer in 2019, so this is the first year we have used them.
Yeah, but you've been doing, your team's been doing yeoman's work for a number of years.
We have, we have, we have completely, we have completely realigned the curriculum, which was a massive task. So we did that first, and then we identified areas where the integration would be appropriate. And this past summer, we developed and we're implementing those activities right now.
There were adjustments to the transition plan as a result of budgets or requests of the board and so on, so reassessing that timeline, we're not lockstep in it, and we may not have hit those specific targets, but again, that was in response to budgetary needs and requests.
I like the fact that you published it, and it goes all the way back four years, and you're more or less following it. I have to tell you, if I can get that out of everybody in the administration, that would be fantastic.
Thank you.
Ms. Stowe?
So, following kind of the theme you're going with, Peter, but if, obviously, our biggest investment are our teachers in front of everyone, so that's, that's what moves the needle the most, I hope. But after that, we've invested a lot of digital tools, and for example, I know ST Math and Dreambox are something that we've been using actively, I believe it's just the elementary school level?
Through middle school.
Through a middle school.
There's a cap on the content, so it makes sense to go to middle school.
So, if you could pick your top three things in math, and I'm happy to hear from the math experts, what would they be for elementary school, middle school, and high school, in terms of digital tools?
Can we talk physical?
And physical, absolutely. I would, I would think the teachers are number one, so then after that.
And adding to that, as a companion, as a partner, we do not have that tier-one, tier-two support, the interventionist to provide for math instruction, and we've had this conversation before. I think at one time you said, if you had a million dollars, what would you propose? And we would propose the need for math interventionists, and that is a need across all of our schools. We work hard to be creative in how to provide that support, but we have that literacy specialist model, we do not have a companion math specialist model. And I think the teachers are working tirelessly to provide those tiered supports, and that's why we have that portfolio of resources with the digital tools, which help supplement, but, and the coaches are phenomenal at what they do to provide that additional support. But you really do need that companion to either be inclusive in the classroom to provide additional tier-one support, or someone that can, we can create an intervention model at that tier-two level. But I'll let Sheila, if there was any digital tools, Sean, Dana? I saw you light up, Sean.
Well, I can't share the math, you asked specifically about the math, but I know, with the science, at the high school, with science, we adopted a new digital tool this year called Gizmos, and teachers really are enjoying using it, the students seem to really enjoy using it. It provides a lot of data analysis for students to go through, it provides them the opportunity to go through investigations online, collect real data, or data based on the manipulations that they made, and analyze that data. It does have a personalized feature to it as well, so that the answers that the students provide, the teachers can see that kind of live as it's coming in, and make any adjustments in their instruction accordingly. So, we've really liked that, that's, this is the first year that we've used that technology, so we really liked that particular one.
Ms. Olson, did you want to add anything?
Well, yeah, I just wanted to follow up with that question, but, and for the elementary schools, we can go back to Ms. Parisi perhaps, the Gizmos, the tool for the high school science sounds fantastic, and for the elementary school, and just your math interventionist, what would, what would be the digital platforms that you find the most necessary for elementary school level?
Right now, we are seeing a lot of impact, I think, with ST Math and Dreambox. I think as a result of that pilot and testing the two the way we did, we got a lot of information, and we interviewed every single teacher, it was 21 teachers, one-on-one interviews. So we're very pleased with those tools, because one, being adaptive, and we have the flexibility where if we find that students in three-five need to go to ST Math, we can use those licenses to provide them with that platform. That, in addition to the IXL Math, we have access to Khan Academy, I mean, there are so many different resources. I think if we add in any more digital tools like that, then the teachers would like scream, because they're trying to navigate through all of those different tools. So I think if we remain committed to the ones that we know that are going to have the greatest impact on what's happening, and that you have the data behind it, so the teachers have the dashboard, they can sit side by side with the student, go through that data review, those two tools, again, we tested them.
To be clear, I wasn't suggesting more.
Completely, that's not exactly, but it's probably one of the concerns is having too many, that's why I wanted to follow up.
I don't know if I would necessarily advocate for another one. Tuva's been a fantastic addition to, that Tuva Data Lab has been a great addition with the data literacy piece, because we can really give students in, you know, real-time, on-demand, that type of data literacy for that work, that expectation, that cognitive demand that's expected in the NGSS. But yeah, I would say, let's stay committed, let's internalize and hone our craft with those tools before we start to add more.
And would you say that there's a different amount of time spent with a high school student, per se, using digital tools versus elementary school, and this is a concern that's been voiced many times, so listing off more tools is not exactly what I want to hear, but would you say the time that they're spent actually on those devices is significantly lower at the lower grades? Can you just speak on that for a second?
I'll have John or Sheila speak to the Gizmos piece, but we do lean on the meta-analysis of ST Math and Dreambox, and they came back and said that after their study of all schools and students, that we recommend X number of minutes so many times a week, and we actually scaled it back, they recommended ninety minutes a week, we said twenty minutes for three times a week, and that would be sufficient, at least if we could get to sixty minutes in a week dedicated to those tools. The one, not, not both of them, again, they're grade band specific, but on average, schools are forty-five minutes to sixty minutes on Dreambox or ST Math, but again, that's aligned with the research and the meta-analysis to ensure, because they told us that's the common effect that you're going to get if you have that dedicated use, and you would see the impact and achievement. So, when I monitor the, the usage, I see anywhere from thirty-three minutes to almost fifty-two minutes in a week on either ST Math or Dreambox. Yeah, a week, yeah.
So it was a day?
No, 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 that's a week.
You're talking math, it might be.
No, she says it's for a week.
It's a week.
No, but I'm saying that, but we're just talking, but you're saying digital tools entirely, like, we're just talking math.
That is just, I'm just saying, ST Math and Dreambox.
That's what I'm saying, it could be a lot more than that, that's just math and Dreambox, those are just the tools, yeah.
Gizmos, I think, is.
It's still a concern of mine, for sure, but, okay, thank you.
Ms. Hirsch?
Along the same lines as the digital toolbox, I know this was a discussion from years past about having more science labs and hands-on, you know, science education for our students. This was something that has sort of been overlooked, and I know that this is a big part of NGSS, and I was going to save it for the NGSS report, but the question then becomes, how much hands-on science learning are students doing if we're focused on a lot of the digital tools, you know, in the toolbox?
Would it be most helpful to talk about that through the science curriculum, and then we can, you can actually hear from the teachers how it is happening?
Not a problem.
Mr. Sherr?
I had a couple of questions, and I'm sorry I'm hogging time tonight, but, you know, this is the only time this, in a year, we'll talk about math and science, so it takes some time. The question that I had was, Sheila, you referred to understanding NCS, NGSS data as a workshop that you had conducted or are conducting. What data and what tools are you using in those sessions?
Just so that I understand, the pop-up PD that we did for administrators?
I think that's what Sheila was talking about.
Yes, understanding, and, so we can see.
The two of you went and did a session in Greenwich, right? It was about an hour, I guess?
Right, that's the intent of, you know, pop-up store, we're a pop-up PD.
Nice idea.
Thank you. So, yes, we went out to the school and invited principals to come, and because they can see their data, we can see the student data, we are not allowed to share it at this time because they're, they're recalibrating, there's going to be further.
What data is that?
The NGSS assessment data.
Yeah, I'm going more specific. What do they do, log into a state portal?
Correct, through the Connecticut Assessment Portal, they're able to log in and see the information by student, by teacher. They, with theirs, it's their school-specific, we can see across the district.
And then you taught them how to use that and analyze the data.
Correct, so that what could they start to look for, what types of questions can they start asking the learners and the teachers? Helps them understand too, the curriculum, so when you see the curriculum go live, again, what should you be looking for?
And my other question was, which is probably more for you, Dana and John, is, we have experienced a, we don't, I mean, maybe everybody else was paying attention to it, I usually pay attention to numbers, but I missed this one. We've had substantial growth over the last five years on the number of students at Greenwich High School. We have a real bubble moving through the system. I mean, it's not trivial, it's like a hundred, and it's like sixty, and eighty, year over year. We're substantially larger now than we were before. Everybody always tell me about the 1970s, but at the school, it's a thousand or something crazy. Anyway, my question is, because we've put so much focus on STEM education particularly, and we have not really increased staff in this building, so. So, by the way, I'm not trumping anybody because I already sent this question over to the superintendent, and she's working on it, I know, or her staff is working on it in some more detail. But the question that I was really asking is particularly in the honors and advanced placement courses, what can you tell us about class size in those classes? Or, because I know particularly in those class sizes, not in all class sizes, but in some class sizes, if you add a few more students, it really, really matters. So I'm wondering what you guys are seeing, particularly for honors and AP. I'm interested in any comments you have for anything else in the system, and increased class sizes in core mathematics and core science. Or are you just dealing with it, and it's all good? Which, by the way, you two are so fantastic, I'm certain that's the answer, but.
So to start with your question about the impact on the honors classes, I would say in the last 20 years that I've been here in the district, I feel like our honors classes have always been high. 27, 28 students is usually what it is, and I don't feel much of a change with that this year with the honors classes. I am more concerned with our other level classes and the impact of the class size on it.
Which level?
Our A and our B level, for sure, speaking specifically for math. It's very much a concern of mine.
Why is it a concern? Because it's gotten.
You have, you have our media students who.
Are you telling, let me, somebody asked a question differently. Are you telling me that AP and honors is relatively stable, and that increase is all impacting the, what you call AMB? Or the majority of the impact is there?
When I look at my class lists.
In your house?
For, no, well, the whole school.
Across?
For the math department.
Okay, okay.
For all 30 of my teachers, the class sizes for the honors, I would say have been consistent, and we're, because they've always been maxed at 27, 28. But for the classes, the A level and the B level, I've definitely noticed an increase in those class sizes.
The reason I'm particularly concerned is, I was concerned, there was a comment made that there are, you know, master schedule's always been difficult. It's always, you know, I don't even know how that runs. Talked to David Walker, and he wax poetic about it. But it's a complicated thing. I did, but here, I got a little alarmed on waiting lists. That was raised this recently, is, you know, I was like, okay, well, how big is that problem? Right? So I hear what you're saying. John, what would you say about science? Is it, is it any different, or is it tracking perfectly because it's STEM, or?
I want to start by saying, I mean, there are fluctuations constantly, right? So we do see this go up and down a lot. I would say that the general trend for in-science, for the AP and honors, has been a little higher, I would say, than a decade ago. I mean, if you go back and look a decade ago, it was probably on average, one or two students, maybe three students, on average, lower. So we have increased a bit over the last couple of years. And like Dana, I am starting to see an increase in our students with the most academic challenges as well. So kind of on both ends of the spectrum, a little bit more than in the middle.
Other discussion?
So I had a question with respect to the, I guess it's the SBA levels that we're seeing and the numbers that are articulated on pages seven and eight of the report. And obviously, as you go through, the write-up talks about each grade specifically, and it talks about the achievements of certain schools. For example, North Myannis and Eastern Middle School seem to be knocked out of park, and I'm very glad about that. But I also noticed that these numbers, while showing certain percentages, some of them are relatively minor. And I'm wondering if you're seeing where certain schools, as we see in North Myannis and Eastern are excelling, to create the uptick, the ever so, the slight uptick, are we seeing schools that are falling in percentages to create this balance? So what I'm really trying to articulate here is, are you seeing, where you're talking about certain schools are increasing their percentages, are you seeing other schools that are declining? And do you have a breakout of each of these schools?
We do have the scores by school, and we can provide that, if you want us to provide that to you. The answer to that is, yes, there are schools that have fallen, and that does bring the percentage down a little bit. And what we have done in the last year is, we have gone over to the schools that are excelling. In many cases, they have immediately adopted and implemented the recommendations that I've asked them to do. And one of the prime examples was more work in fluency and more work in word problems, complex word problems. So the schools that are doing that every day, that are taking those problems apart and discussing them, and coming up with more than one solution, are the schools that are raising their percentages substantially. But I can certainly give you that breakdown.
Yeah, I would just, I would just be curious, because I also, what you see for, on page nine, right, is you see the third, level three and level four, and you see an increase, an increase between level three and to level four, which I think is great. But you see this constant, what looks to be about the 25% in level one and level two. And I'm just curious if we're seeing that across all boards of all schools, all of the elementary schools, that this is coming from, or do we see it particularly in certain schools?
We've identified certain schools, and we have provided extra professional, focused professional learning for them. And because we looked at those schools, and we looked at what teachers articulated, and we looked at student work, and we looked at really what was happening with those students at those levels, we discovered that in many cases, their fluency was poor, and so we added that back into every elementary unit, K5. So it's not just one resource, it's level resources, so that students and teachers can use the resources most appropriate. Those schools are also using Dreambox and ST Math. And we also have written word problem sets for them as well, and word problem assessments. So we really focused in on that. But in the professional learning, in addition to the district professional learning, we've done a lot of work with teachers in using that concrete to abstract sequence, and showing them what those progressions look like, and what the activities look like. And in the new pacing guide, we have given teachers examples of what this could look like in the classroom. So we've unwrapped the standards for them, and said, this is, here are three ways that it could, you could do this in your classroom.
Obviously, there's something to be said for consistent implementation of the curriculum, and we partner with the principals to assure and monitor, because we're only as good as their ability to monitor what's happening in the classrooms, because we know that that's where you're going to make the difference. So I know Dr. Caravillo also works with each principal as they create their school improvement plan. So they are already analyzing this data, they have already analyzed this information in the development of that plan, and they've outlined some action steps to, intentional action steps to improve, and certainly work towards growth in these areas.
Yeah, now, you've answered my next question, which is, you talk about those schools that are using those word problems and that fluency and that repetition, and those kids are repeatedly testing at a higher level. And if your curriculum is supposed to be the same across the entire district, then how are we not using those word problems in other schools? But you can answer that.
They all have access to everything that we do. And again, it's, it comes from all of the teachers, that feedback loop, and that's why we created these revisions. It's why it's important to have that opportunity to renew, again, being responsive and flexible for the teachers.
Any additional discussion on the STEM report? Okay, Mr. Sher.
I read the mind, we were at Parkway School, and we approved a biology text or an environmental science text.
Yes.
Which one was it?
Dr. Gilde was here, so that year, 1718.
When was that?
I have to do it that way, because the only one I can remember, which super was sitting in the chair.
My question really was, how, I mean, it was a question for you, John. How's the implementation of that going?
Fantastic.
Do you know which one I'm talking about, John?
I do.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad you're my, you're a memory bank.
It's going fine. I mean, I don't know.
Did it come out as, did it come out as you guys thought it would?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I, just personal plug, every, everybody here's got a kid, or has a kid who's going through the school system into the high school, or has kids who are out. My most recent was a big-time STEM kid at Greenwich High School. He's now at a fine university, and he's reporting two things. I think he's taking BC or AB, they may have taken him over again, or he didn't have to, he could have, but he did. And he says, "Dad, it's like nothing because of what I learned at Greenwich High School." And the second thing is, is he's gonna, I don't know what happened right now, he's going to be a rocket scientist, and I have to give the credit for that, not for a darn thing done in my household, but for what the teaching staff has done in Greenwich Public Schools, particularly at Greenwich High School, so thank you.
Ms. Hirsch?
So tagging on to what Mr. Sher had said, I know this isn't necessarily a question now, but it's just sort of a, and I know it has something to do with the teacher contract as well, when you have waiting lists for students to move from course to course at the high school, if they're at a higher level math, they need to move down, or a lower level, and you need to move up. Sometimes it's also, you know, teachers have reached their contractual limits. This could sort of impact students' overall GPAs at a level where they're looking at colleges, that makes a big difference. So that's something I just sort of wanted to bring up as a point if we're looking at waitlists. But on the same discussion as on math, we had several math pilots a few years back, and I don't believe that the board has ever gotten an update as to how those pilots did. And I don't know if you have that information.
Just so I make sure I understand, can I answer your question? Are you speaking to the elementary math personalized learning pilot?
Yes.
Okay, that's a lot of words. So annually, we report on the pilots at the end of the year, and that was intentional. I think we had three touchpoints with the board, specific to the math pilot. And the point of a pilot is, you learn from it, and then you implement. So that's where we transitioned into the next year, which was Wave 2. And so we went through with the wave-based approach. There was no need for an additional pilot. We learned what we wanted to learn, we were able to implement the two tools, and then those teaching practices and everything that came along with it. So we transitioned from the pilot reported on that to the, and I can certainly send you the link. And we went into the wave-based approach, so that we are capturing new groups, those innovative teams in each of the schools, to continue the work that was in the spirit of the first original Wave 1, if you will, or Wave 0, the pilot. But I can certainly send the link to Tony, and it's on Boardex.
It'd be helpful, because I'm going to say, I believe under our policy, pilots start and end by coming to the board. And I don't know that it was ever presented as, "It's over." This one carried through for a while, but I don't think it was communicated in a, "It's over, we've learned what we wanted to learn, we're moving on and implementing." So I'm curious to see what you provide us, and then we may have a discussion about that. Any further discussion on the STEM report? If not, why don't we move on to the NGSS science standards?
They can't go yet, you can't go home yet.
You can stay though, John, you don't have to leave.
Okay, so we'll see how we do this. So before you, yes, you have an overview of the GPS NGSS science curriculum, presented in four parts. There is a summary of our curriculum development process, which we had shared previously in previous reports. It's just a reminder, again, to orient the board. We now provided an ongoing implementation and analysis of the curriculum, and examples of our model curriculum with an appendix, and those are attached. And as Mr. Sher pointed out, we did provide the timeline for all of this work, and where we started, and every touchpoint that we had with the board through the multiple different reports. Because this has been a passion, right, a passion project, and we wanted to ensure that all students had access to all standards. I do want to introduce the team. They'll be coming up shortly, we'll see how this works for us, because there's a lot of people here in support, and have been a part of this work. And their energy is astounding. We have Beth Cotter, instructional coach, Julia Haas-Gotzel, instructional coach, Jen Bressler, instructional coach, Christina Klepper, teacher colleague, Kate Mizrahi, teacher colleague, Regina Tracy Sims, teacher colleague, Stacy Moser, teacher colleague, Scott Salborn, teacher colleague, John Ellinger, teacher colleague, Lindsay Keller, teacher colleague, Kathy Feinberg, teacher colleague, Tyler McCozy, teacher colleague, Sarah Myers, teacher colleague, and again, John and Dana, who as part of our administrative academic team are always there to support us, and Bonnie O'Regan, our outfacilitator. I also want to point out that Dr. David Moss is here. He's been our thought partner through all of this work, and a champion for ensuring that all standards are available for all students. So we're grateful to all of them that I've just mentioned for giving their time, their energy, and their expertise through this work. And I do believe, once we are able to share the NGSS assessment data with you, you'll be just as proud as we are. When they say we can. So I believe, Sheila, I don't know if you want to share anything else about, because we can certainly, yeah, we just want to kind of tiptoe through, so we can just point out things that are important to notice. And I do, we do have to hand out, I failed to provide you with an eighth-grade example, so you have a fourth-grade example, elementary, middle-school example, eighth-grade, I'll give that to you, and then you have a high school chemistry example of what the curriculum looks like. Yes.
Is this, because this is a sample, right?
Yes.
So, and we've had this conversation about curriculum, and the board's role in curriculum, so on and so forth. Is the real curriculum, is that thing online now for us in that Aspen curriculum maps?
There's some that's there, but as you know, we've transitioned, because Aspen became a problem for, it was just a challenge, it was too many clicks, it wasn't a one-click collection.
Which tool did you want to be in?
So it's Schoology.
Okay, moved it in to Schoology.
So we would have to provide.
But if I wanted to see the whole thing, because this is examples, right? And thank you, by the way, for not killing 80 trees to give us a 400-page report.
We did check with Dr. Jones, how much did we provide you with, and so, yeah.
That was really good.
Yeah.
But I'm just wondering where we can see the whole thing if we so cared?
I'm sorry, I wasn't.
Where we could see the whole thing if we so cared?
The, if, there's a new page on the website, District Curriculum. So if you go there, all of K5 is present there, and you can click, and you can see it there. But we would have to provide you with additional links to access. Again, we were transitioning from Aspen to Schoology.
That's funny, that's funny. And just to follow up on that, is the thought then to make the rest of it available beyond five?
Yes.
And what's the timeframe for that?
Our, right now, my goal is by June of 2020, where they'll have access to everything. We'll have another upload in December 1, and then by the end of the year. Sheila would like to just take you through some key points, will be short and brief. And then we do want to have the teachers to be able to share, they've been waiting patiently, what the impact of this curriculum has been on their practice, and the impact on their learners, and the fun that it has brought back to their classroom. Yes, I will distribute the grade A piece. And we will include this in our agenda.
So what I want to do is take you very quickly through some of the key components of the curriculum. So if you could turn back to the appendix and look at the unit overview, which is Grade 4 Energy Transfer and Ecosystems. So every unit in our curriculum starts out with an anchoring phenomenon. And an anchoring phenomena is an event that happens naturally. It's complex enough that it takes the entire unit to learn and discover the science behind it. And what students learn to do is they ask questions, they have new learning, and they articulate a claim based on evidence as a result of discovering and evaluating science content. The key about this curriculum is that content that's been traditionally abstract and taught in separate little pieces is now taught in an interdisciplinary way, applied to a specific real-world scenario or observation. And this grounds the students so that they can apply it in context, and that they can really explore it more deeply. So that is what some of the change in this new curriculum is about. It's heavily hands-on and inquiry-based. The majority of our resources are not digital. Students are actively doing things, designing things, creating. Students are actively doing things, designing things, creating models, discussing those models, revising them, coming up with performance-based projects at the end of the unit. All of our unit assessments are performance-based. So, I want to start with the overview in Grade 4. You'll see at the top, it's the anchoring phenomenon. And this one, this unit is based on a study of the Long Island Sound, and it's looking at the Long Island Sound. It's in the appendix.
Oh, and the actual report is on?
In the report itself.
So, there is a screen handed. Okay. Thank you.
So, you'll see that, we're going to look at this through the lens of the diversity in Long Island Sound. Essential questions, those are questions that students, it's important that students understand and answer as they move through the unit. And the enduring understanding is what we want them to come away with. The performance expectations are laid out in the unit, and you will notice that they're not just life science. A traditional ecosystem unit would only be life science. You'll see that there's some physical science there, and there's some Earth and space, and there's engineering concepts. So, it's all, it is all interdisciplinary, it's not one piece of science. We teach science in this new curriculum through the lens of the science and engineering practices, and the ones that we are looking at in this unit are bolded. And we have this in every unit. Cross-cutting concepts are concepts that move across all disciplines in science. And you'll look at these ones, we're looking at energy and matter, and we're looking at stability and change in this unit. So, throughout the unit, in all of the foundational lessons, students will be considering those as they discover science content and they complete their investigations. This is what the Summit of Assessment is in this unit. You'll see it's a hands-on, performance-based task. One of the biggest supports we have for the teachers is, we have unwrapped the disciplinary core ideas. And if you'll take a look, you'll see that there are links there. If a teacher goes, clicks onto that link, it takes them all the way back to the conceptual framework. And they can see by grade band what content they're responsible for, and an explanation of what it is. And we've done that for them in every unit. So, you can see, as we're moving through here, we have that for every standard. Okay, and the next piece in this unit is the first foundational lesson. And you'll see that at the very top, you've got the standard that's addressed. So, the first thing that students and teachers will consider and articulate is understanding the standard, the student learning objectives, learner background. And you'll see that there's a rather long teacher background. We have that, so the teachers have hints on how to implement the lesson. They can either use this as it's written here, or they can modify it to address the students that are sitting in front of them. And then, the next part is the suggested learning activities. And you'll notice that right below that heading is an example of how this lesson could play out in the classroom. We are not asking teachers to move through this curriculum lockstep. They have to modify it and adjust it, and personalize it for the students in front of them. But for teachers that would rather have that guidance, this is an example of what could be done. So, we move through the whole unit. And in this particular lesson, you'll see Part 2 is an example of a lesson in data literacy. So, you'll see that there is a dataset here, and there are question prompts that teachers can use with students to initiate a discussion. And then, you'll see what they're assessing the students in this particular lesson with. The next page is the content rubric. This shows students who are beginning, students who have mastered, and students who have exceeded. These are criteria for each. So, this gives a guide for teachers to assess. And we have these content rubrics for every single unit.
I want to bring the teachers up to the [inaudible].
So, if you look at the Grade 8 unit, and you look at the Grade 11 unit, you'll see that there are similar components in it. So, we'd like, at this point, to bring our teachers, our team up, and have them, I'll tell you personally, how this curriculum is happening.
Maybe it makes sense to sit in this front row, and then I'll go past the mic. Yeah. Or you can stand where you are. I wanted it to just flow, and then I'll just pass the mic. Ray, you want to go first?
Introduce yourself.
Good evening. Hi. My name is Christina Klepper. I teach 5th grade at Glenville School. There are three science units taught in 5th grade, Waves, Natural Resources, and Climate. Throughout each unit, students apply and demonstrate an understanding of the NGSS Science and Engineering Practices. Modeling and Data Literacy are two of these practices that have significantly shifted our science work at the elementary level. In NGSS Science, a model is a representation of an idea, process, or system that is used to describe and explain how a phenomenon works. Models have a variety of uses in the classroom, from providing a way of explaining complex information to presenting a prediction. It is a valuable tool for teachers to uncover the depth of understanding that their students have of a given topic. There may be more than one model proposed to students to explain or predict what might happen in particular circumstances. And students are expected to share and review their models, and in the process, their models evolve. Therefore, models are central to the process of knowledge building in science. So, a more concrete example of this, of an NGSS Science modeling, is going to be explained with our first unit, which is Waves, where students create a variety of models. So, the students begin the Waves unit by creating a model that shows how objects are able to be seen. Initially, many students create their model, and it shows just the human eye and an object. Once the initial models are created, students dive into their new learning through different research experiences, which could be student-created playlists, station rotation, and choice boards. Students begin to discover information about light waves and how they work in our everyday lives. Students slowly come to the realization that we need a light source to see how the path of light travels, and how the reflection and refraction of light impacts our sight. Throughout this process, students revise their initial models over time to show that light travels in a straight line and reflects off an object into our eyes, allowing us to see the object. Some students who are developmentally ready even take it a step further, explaining that once light reaches our eye, signals are sent to our brain, and our brain deciphers the information in order to detect the appearance, location, and movement of the object we are looking at. We continue to develop our modeling practice throughout the year. As a part of personalized learning, student reflection, and goal-setting, students have provided the following feedback. This is from my class right now. These are on the science practices. So, one student shared that modeling helps me, because if I forget something, or if I'm confused, I can always reflect on my models. Another student shared, it helps me explain my thinking and makes my thinking come alive. It helps me express my learning. And a third student shared, making models helps me better understand science, because it shows my thinking in pictures and helps support my thinking in notes by showing how this happened, why it happened, and when it happened. It can also bring a clear picture into someone else's mind when you explain it. Then, they can give you tips to revise your model. It's very important. Another scientific practice that has significantly impacted our, how we changed our, the way we teach science at the elementary level, is data literacy. And data literacy refers to the ability to understand, generate, and use data. This can mean anything from being able to sort through the results of a survey, to being able to understand the meaning of a complicated graph or chart. It also includes the ability to critically evaluate data and visual representations. So, NGSS requires increasing complex data literacy skills. And students have been generating, collecting, and analyzing data for years in Greenwich. Now, with NGSS, students are analyzing and synthesizing significantly larger sets than they're able to generate on their own.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Tyler McCozy. I teach 8th grade science at Western Middle School. So, my son turned one yesterday, and naturally, I've spent an incredible amount of time researching brain development in young children. When I was listening to one of my books, I actually came across a passage, and I knew it would be perfect, because I'd be talking to you all today. If you look at four-year-olds, they are constantly asking questions. But by the time they are six, they stop asking questions, because they quickly learn that teachers only value the right answers more than the provocative questions. High school students rarely show inquisitiveness, and by the time they have grown up and are in corporate settings, they have had all of the curiosity trumped completely out of them. Fortunately for our students, they are part of a shift towards the NGSS curriculum, which opposes these aforementioned ideas. As we began our most recent unit, I encouraged students to ask as many questions as they could possibly come up with, questions like, how did an asteroid wipe out the entire population of the dinosaurs? At which point, I respond by saying, great question, write that down. The reaction I got from my students were things like, this is so frustrating, or more dramatically, because it is 8th grade, why are you doing this to us? I simply reminded them that this is natural curiosity that they're showing is a good thing, and that we would be using these incredible questions to increase our learning potential, and to help us to work towards the solution to a much bigger problem. In this case, for instance, applying concepts from physics, astronomy, geology, and biology to design and communicate a prevention method for an asteroid collision with Earth. From here, students began their search for evidence and data they would need to answer their questions, and identify which evidence they need but did not yet have. As in the elementary setting, data literacy is becoming central to our work. Exploring the complexities of authentic data collected by students and curated by sites like Tuva is the best way to prepare our students for the real world. The authentic interaction students have with datasets, complex text, connections between concepts and questions has students consistently returning to their mental models with new ideas. The mental model for each unit begins with only the essential question on the page, but by the end, it is covered in revisions, diagrams, connections, annotations, and of course, questions. The NGSS language has already become a staple in their ability to communicate with one another. At the start of the lesson, I will explain which cross-cutting concept they should be looking for. A common one in our current unit about the fossil record is patterns. By the end of the lesson, they are eager to identify what other cross-cutting concepts they have noticed, backing up their claim with the appropriate evidence and reasoning. At the end of the day, the eagerness is all I could have ever hoped for. My students don't question the purpose of what we do in class, because they know if they're going to come up with a solution, each lesson must be getting us a little bit closer. The units are authentic, and the students feel ownership over everything they do. They're coming into class excited, and as a teacher, if you have that, you have everything.
Hi, good evening. My name's Sarah Myers. I teach Biology and Chemistry here at the high school. And this year marks the implementation of the NGSS curriculum across our Bio, Chem, Physics, and Marine Bio. So, we are fully in it. The positive changes stemming from how we, as teachers, think about the disciplinary core ideas is very evident. By integrating the practices and cross-cutting concepts that have already been echoed at the elementary and middle school alongside rigorous content, we provide students with experience in science that allow them to explain the world around them, and now at the high school level, tackle global challenges. The disciplinary core ideas provide a source of rich content for students to master throughout their high school careers. And over the years, we have teachers, administrators, we have had many dialogues about the balance between the skills students need to be successful, and the volume of content that should be covered prior to their post-college ventures. Traditionally, students have been taught objectives under the umbrella of a given unit. For example, during the chemical bonding unit in Chemistry, which I'm actually in the middle right now, students might be asked to compare and contrast ionic and covalent bonds, and explain the interactions or intermolecular forces that those compounds have with each other. While this may have been successful in the past at addressing the concern of teaching enough content, so to speak, it doesn't inherently lend itself to student-driven discovery. Our work with the NGSS framework has shifted the instructional planning and practice in a way that lets students determine what further information they need when defining problems and proposing solutions. So, what does this look like in the classroom? The unit you've had a chance to preview takes the same bonding content and frames it in a more NGS approach. So, students are presented with the BP Horizon oil spill. On the surface, this seems like an environmental issue, and they're asked to propose a cleanup method. In various effective manners, they figure out what effective means. However, what students discover is that they actually have to tackle chemical bonding patterns, the molecular structures of oil and water, and the interactions between them in order to make a strong evidence-based argument for their proposed cleanup method. As such, students are engaged in the content for an express purpose. Throughout the unit, students can be seeing modeling molecular structures, using those models to then predict the efficacy of their solution, working as a cohesive team to plan and conduct an investigation, and then finally communicating their findings, all while they're, all while basing their arguments on evidence and scientific reasoning. Very often in class, you hear the age-old question, why do I have to know this? In my own, in making my own observations and speaking with colleagues, this question is asked less and less frequently, as we get further with the curriculum. More often, I hear, wait, this is Chemistry. To me, this is a win. Students are seeing that Chemistry does not exist in a vacuum in school. Chemistry can explain phenomena that they might categorize as Biology or Science, Environmental Science. And I also think this supports the STEM integration conversation we were having earlier, and that as high school students, heading out as productive members of society, making these connections is really vital for them.
My name is Julia Haas-Gotzel. I am a district instructional coach. I work in the elementary schools. And I'm here as a celebration of sorts. We've been engaged in the development and the writing and the renewal, receiving feedback, piloting, revision again of the science curriculum for quite some time. And I think that we've learned to be better educators, and learners, and risk-takers. And if you could see us in the summers, in a room on a beautiful summer day with no windows, eating lots of Kit Kats, I think we've learned to be better people. So, I really want to take this opportunity to celebrate our curriculum. I'm proud of the teachers who work their hearts out, and continually do what's best for the kids in front of them. I'm proud of the students who take risks, dare to be vulnerable, and try something new. I'm very proud of our curriculum. I'm proud of our hard work. And there's many reasons that I'm proud of it. We were asked to talk about the impact on students and on teachers, and I've chosen one reason. And that one reason is of the real-world connections that are inherent in this curriculum. So, our curriculum now connects with the real world, not just through the content, but also through process. Sarah said this beautifully, our learning does not exist in a vacuum, it never does. Our world is connected. The sciences are interconnected, and that's evidenced in the cross-cutting concepts. So, our units are not taught thematically, they instead mirror the way our world works. Students learn through the interconnectivity of science by studying and explaining real-world phenomena, and thinking about the how and the why of that explanation. They solve real-world problems in our natural and in our built world, and they approach complex engineering and design solutions with creativity, with thoughtfulness. I'll give you a few examples. So, one design solution that kindergartners work through is the playground slide always gets too hot for comfort on a sunny day. What can we do to solve this problem? Second grade has an anchoring phenomenon. We planted a vegetable garden last spring, and this year, there are plants that we did not plant in there. What happened? How'd they get there? In middle school, they're engineering design solutions for toxic algae blooms. We've seen that on the news. And then, in high school, they're taste-testing hamburgers versus the Beyond Burgers, and thinking about the ecological implications. So, the content has real-world connections, not just the content, but also the process. Our curriculum teaches skills that develop our students into that vision of the graduate that we all have, the type of people that we want in our workplace, and sharing our society. Our kids are invested in this work, because it connects to their everyday lives, and it excites them. They're naturally excited to observe details about the world around them. They are naturally, they're taught to be, they're naturally inquisitive, but they're taught to pose and prove substantive questions, questions about which they are passionate. They learn to critically analyze, evaluate, synthesize information. We look at real-world data, you've heard a lot about this tonight already. And eventually, they develop a thoughtful claim, a claim that is based in evidence, based in fact. So, our students are taught to be collaborative, analytical thinkers. They're kind to each other within their discourse. They pursue knowledge with passion and curiosity. They respond to failures. And truly, isn't this a real-world connection? Aren't these the humans with whom we want to share our society and our democracy and more besides? So, this is why we are proud.
Yes, we're very passionate about this. We've been doing this work for a decade, actually, a little bit more than that. My name is Beth Cotter. I'm one of the elementary instructional coaches as well. So, NGSS has really increased the demands of students' work So NGSS has really increased the demands of students working with complex data. So the work that we began in 2008 when we started moving to the inquiry model has really set us up for success as we move to this more rigorous learning environment. Previously, under the inquiry model, students were designing and conducting investigations. They were collecting and analyzing the data. Today, they're still doing that, but they're also working with significantly more complex data, and they're analyzing data that is actually collected by real scientists, and they're using that data to support the claims that they're making and draw conclusions about natural phenomena. You heard Christina Klepper reference the complexity of data in her remarks. Teachers are using questions about the cross-cutting concepts to guide students to identify patterns, which is one of the cross-cutting concepts, and cause-and-effect relationships, which is also a cross-cutting concept, in the data. And this is leading to very productive discourse, to Julia's point, with kindness and respect. So all these things that we're looking for from our children. In the elementary program, teachers are curating data sources for children, and they are explicitly teaching children how to analyze data, how to synthesize data, and then how to draw conclusions from that data. Additionally, as students are working with data beyond their classroom walls, teachers are teaching them how to evaluate data from other sources and critique that data in order to identify the most convincing data points, additionally, data points that will refute their conclusions. Students in one fourth grade classroom this year said, this is really hard, but it's fun. And then our fourth graders are, when we looked at Tuva as it was initially presented to us, it was a tool that had been designed initially for older students, middle school. And our elementary students are absolutely loving it. They're able to very quickly adapt. There is explicit instruction in how to use the database, but they're very excited about it. NGSS has raised the bar and is demanding much more of our students. And as you can see here this evening, our Greenwich Public Schools teachers are rising to meet this challenge of providing engaging and rigorous science instruction for our
Hi, I'm Jen Bressler. I'm a secondary instructional coach. And as you heard, the learning as a result of NGSS is very authentic, very rooted in the real world. Engagement is up for our students, and it's important for all the kids, but it's especially important for our middle schoolers. I heard a lot of talk earlier about elementary and high school. We do have three grades there in the middle that are also really engaged in this rigorous curriculum. As you heard, the biggest shift is to this authenticity. Instead of learning concepts in a kind of prescribed and static order, the kids are developing their own questions that they need to explore in order to master the standards. I've heard questions already this year, why do bruises change color? Why does their stomach acid not kill us? How fast did the asteroid have to be moving to cause the creature that killed the dinosaurs? And the big shift here is that the kids are coming up with the questions. All those questions get them to the standards that they need, as you heard from Sarah earlier, but it's that they're world-seeing with questions from them, and they're in charge of their own inquiry and research. Another big shift in the middle school is that not only are the kids kind of more independently navigating their inquiry paths, but also that process within that personalized learning shift, the kids are dividing up roles and responsibilities in different ways in different groups based on their strengths. I've seen groups in one class do things four different ways, and everyone ended up being very successful with it. They sometimes construct norms for their groups before they begin. One of favorite I heard this year was, be passionate and leave no one out. Because of all this increased engagement, all the teachers that I work with have shared that students are really demonstrating a higher level of understanding than they have in previous years. As I hear kids walking through gallery walks, they're speaking very articulately, very passionately, very detailed in their research. And as a result, the questions that their peers are coming up with are raising the conversations even more, so the level of discourse has been quite impressive. And just to talk a little bit earlier, you'd asked questions about the hands-on. As you heard, not only are the kids still doing a lot of investigations, but engineering is a huge component of NGSS, and it's integrated into many of the units. The kids in middle school do all kinds of engineering design solutions. Some kids right now are designing solutions for people living in extreme weather. For kids, some students just finished fantastic, very creative projects, trying to figure out how they could mitigate the effects of different natural hazards on society. And it's just been really exciting to see the joy and the passion that these kids have had. So we do anticipate that we're really preparing our kids to be thoughtful, critical thinkers, and scientists at heart, and I think that was best exemplified earlier by the environmental actions of children who spoke. I think that really embodied kind of what our goal is for our students, for kids to be so passionate about real-world issues and be able to bring the evidence for it. So thank you so much.
So with that, to see why we're so passionate about it, we can take any further questions.
So on behalf of the board, I think I can say this safely. Thank you for your passion. Thank you for your enthusiasm. Thank you for bringing this to life, especially with the students in the classrooms. But for us, it's always great to hear from the teachers with that discussion.
I just want to say thank you also, can I jump in?
Yeah.
I just want to say thank you also. It's, you know, it's late for teachers. You wake up really early. But, you know, it's just to hear it from you and to hear the, you know, just to hear the enthusiasm and the fact that it is, you know, you guys said it time and time again, the fact that it's connected to authentic, real-life situations is what's going to help them retain the information. So I just thank you as the ones that are like on the, you know, on the front lines. Thank you for all that you do on a daily basis.
Ms. Hirsch.
Well, I was going to say, Megan sort of took a little of the wind out of my sails, but I was also going to say the same to thank you guys for making science fun. I know I've seen it in my own home. A student who said, I'm not smart enough for science, has come home filled with questions, inquisitive, sees the real-world connections, is excited to take risks, and has learned to ask the questions that will get her where she needs to go. So thank you. You guys were talking about the incredible amount of work that you guys have done to bring NGSS to life in our classrooms, and I know a lot of that happens through the summer institute and the curriculum work that's done during the summers. So as our classroom teachers, do you feel, this is the question I would have, is that you feel like there's enough support and time from the creation during our summer curriculum institutes to be able to pull those into our classroom on day one? You know, what is, what do you feel, you know, how it works in timing and so forth?
So honestly, day one is a little crazy when we all get there. I would say this year, administration did a very nice job at providing us with time early on in those first couple of days to really be able to connect with colleagues, take a look at it, the materials. I know at the high school level, I assume for the lower grades, were pushed out early over the summer, not that it was expected that we were to look at it, but if we wanted to, we could, and they were made available for us. And really having that first day or so to collaborate was great for us.
I think I have to just, I'd be remiss to not mention Jen in all of this, honestly. Like, you would never know that we're separated by miles between our school because she works, like, she never stops to make sure that we are in constant communication with the teachers at Central and Eastern, that when somebody comes up with something good, she is instantly communicating that out. So the connections we've been able to create across the middle schools, that collaboration is huge because I think that within my curriculum team at Western, we have great ideas, but there's just things that we miss sometimes. And through us all working together, that's why this is coming together so beautifully. It's because there's a lot of really fantastic minds coming together, and we're all being brought together by, at the middle school level, Jen, so thank you.
Mr. Kelly.
I just want to compliment you guys. It's my first night on the job, as you know. I came into this incredibly enthusiastic, and watching the enthusiasm you guys just displayed sets me to a higher level of enthusiasm. Thank you very much for what you just presented to us.
Ms. Steph.
Obviously, I have to say thank you, but, and you told me to keep asking questions, so even though it's late. Yes, and you have to teach, and I want to know what time. Western starts early, that's right, and the middle school, so you really have to get going. But my question is, and maybe it's because I have middle school and elementary school kids, so I'm sorry, I can't like speak to the high school as much, but what are we doing in terms of, if you could give me a percentage of kids working on their own versus in groups? Because I'm hearing a lot more about, like, I feel like it's all group work. And so I'd like to understand how much time we're actually spending as an individual. And then, secondly, when you are grouping, how are you grouping? So is this the kids coming together and choosing their groups, or are you sort of making the groups sort of, is it a mixed skill set? Is it one type of student? I'd like to hear a little bit about that.
So at least in fifth grade, I typically honor the students in a way so they are making a lot of the choices. We do focus on the personalized learning piece, and they spend time on their own doing some independent work, giving everybody, my kids like to say the phrase, it lets us work at our own pace. So giving them the choice boards and the playlists and having them work through station rotation, that allows them to work at their own pace, they don't have to feel so stressed to come to that group. But then, based on their choices and based on their research, then they come together to form their group. So they're really sharing their own thinking, and that way you can hold each student accountable, but then there is, still is that component of collaboration, and then it kind of stays in that collaboration piece. So I would say at the elementary school level, we do a little bit of both.
Do you say like 50/50 owners?
I would probably say 40, 30, 70, or 40, 60.
Okay, and then sorry, middle school?
Yeah. The middle school, I would say, is a little bit different. In the beginning, that's probably the biggest differentiation you see between the advanced and the on-level classes. Your advanced classes typically have 24 leaders out of 24 students, like sitting in the room. So you can give them group work, and you can be 100% certain that they will not stop talking until their point of view has been heard, which is great. The conversations are so rich, and the solutions and ideas they come up with are really creative. On-level, I would say, like, I mean, we're in November now, and the growth I've seen in them is, it's like inspiring to me as a teacher, to watch them come in at the beginning and sit in silence when they're doing group work, to now, I know Jen was in with me the other day, to watch certain people starting to test out their ideas as leaders and trying to run through some kind of like norm and routine within their group and to elicit the ideas of other people. And to see that in a class of, I think that was 26, like, every single person said something or contributed or had their ideas heard, and it's only November. Like, these are goals that I would have by the end of the year, especially knowing they're going into the high school. I think that these kids who will be freshmen next year are going in with such a better toolset for collaboration with their peers.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Just to add something about how there's, just to give you a minute. So speaking of good collaboration, Tyler, and the unit she's in now, the kids are kicked off and their unit launched by coming up with all those great questions that we talked about earlier. Soon, they're going to be created and designed and doing investigations, and the unit ends in a culminating group project. So Tyler had this brilliant idea of having different groups for the question generation than for the investigation, and then for the culminating project. So by the time they got to that culminating project, they would have come from a variety of different experiences and relationships and conversations, which was brilliant. So of course, I did go on to share it with the teachers at the other middle schools, but, so there is a lot of thought that goes into how we partner students.
Great, thank you.
Other discussion? This is a message to the administration, to the teachers. I think it's great work, and it's obviously working. This is my personal view. There was a lack of transparency about the development of the curriculum to the full board. You basically went from giving the board a generalized update in January 2019 to implementing this full bore without ever coming back to us. I know you're going to disagree with me, Irene, but I'm going to say this. I really am disappointed. We put this, the board, put this on the agenda for tonight. Otherwise, we wouldn't really have heard about the implementation. Obviously, going great, that's not the issue. I'm going to say this to my fellow board members, I think we need to take a look at our role in curriculum development and whether we approve it or not. This has been a discussion that's been far too long. We really need to make a decision about what our role is in curriculum, because at the end of the day, it is one of the most important things that happen that the teachers are taking into the classroom and using with the students. So I'm looking at my fellow board members, and at some point, maybe we refer back to PGC, but I think we need to get a bearing on that.
I'm very willing to make all decisions, because again, I'm the only member on PGC, so no problem.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. Thank you. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the AOP Science Program Update.
I do want to make sure we end on a positive note, that as you can see, that this is the result of our investment in our teachers and our students, the professional learning, and our approach to creating a responsive curriculum for our learners, so that we can ensure that all students have access to all standards. Per the request of the board, you have the ALP, the Advanced Learning Interdisciplinary Science, update on the model. This is presented in three sections. There's an overview of the science, the service delivery model during the transition to the NGSS. Section two shares the impact of change for the elementary advanced science enrichment model, and then part three are the recommendations for the elementary advanced science enrichment model. So you, we are here, Bonnie O'Regan, the ALP facilitator, myself, and Sheila are here to answer any questions.
All right. Discussion on this item. I guess I'll start off unless anybody else wants to, because I'm one of the ones who asked for this to be on the agenda. I'm just going to say this, it's a violation of board policy to change a program fundamentally without coming back to us, and I feel like that's what happened here. I understand the reasoning that the standards changed. However, you spent a lot of work in advance getting those standards in shape so that they'd be able to be implemented this fall for the general education population. Some of that work should have and could have been directed to the AOP program. I understand the larger study that's going on. I do want to hear more about that. I am hoping that by the spring, we will have identification, we will have a curriculum, and that this program will be instituted in the way that it was, at a minimum, by the fall. So my personal view, I'm happy to have anybody else weigh in.
If I may just respond to that, you can say whatever you want about me. You can say whatever you want about me, but you can't call me that I'm not compliant. And we did refer to the procedure, and we use that as our guidance, and we worked with three superintendents at the time to support the transition to NGSS. And through the superintendent, the decision was made per the policy to implement in this manner. And I have an obligation to all of the students and all of the teachers in this district to assure that they have access. And we understood that there's a significant cognitive demand of these standards, and I was not confident that if we were to splinter the implementation of these standards in this curriculum, that all students were going to be able to perform at such a level. You asked us to make sure that those students have what they need to perform, were held accountable to those assessments, those statewide assessments and those standards, and I wanted to keep to that promise, that we were giving all students what they needed to be able to perform at their level. We did the research, there is no parallel curriculum at this time for advanced-level work. We're realizing it now through implementation, what could be, but the demand of these standards provide opportunities for students to have acceleration or opportunities to go deeper. But again, there was nothing out there that could support a parallel curriculum to the NGSS. And again, going into the first year of implementation with the NGSS assessment, where the scores count, I wanted to make sure we're putting our absolute best foot forward for all of the students and the teachers.
Mr. Sher.
Irene, I need more information. I understand, I mean, I don't understand it at the level of detail that I have to, but I gather you made some decisions about how to implement the transition in curriculum. What I'm not real clear on is, and maybe this goes back to a conversation about the ALP program, all right, is, and maybe we need to revisit and make much more clearer what the ALP program is. So I gather what you're saying is, is that you So I gather what you're saying is, is that you established a fully integrated, both horizontally and vertically, of vertical integration and a horizontal integration, a curriculum for science, probably not K-12, but probably 112, right? K-12? K-12? Okay, fine. So you did that, right? And you, and I'm hoping you'll jump in and correct me if I don't say something that is accurate. You decided, you had to roll that out, right, to all thirteen grades, right?
Yes.
So you came up with a single standard, a single curriculum based upon the standards. You're not at the stage yet where you have elaborated that within a grade level, different levels, right? That presumably would be work to be done in the future, right? That's a maturity thing, right?
I'm trying to follow.
If you, if I have a unit of study, right, let me pick the high school. If I have a unit of study, if I have something in a standard I'm trying to teach in the ninth grade, I'm teaching it at A, B, at A, B, and honors level, right? And I'm doing it differently. If I'm teaching fifth grade English, I'm, right, I'm teaching that at two levels in the elementary school, because I'm teaching it ALP and non-ALP, right? So my point is, is that it seems to me that in order to be able to do that, you have to put in the baseline curriculum, but then you have to elaborate it. Because if you don't elaborate it, then you don't have multi-levels within a grade, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I guess what you're saying is, is that in the implementation decision that was made to implement NGSS top to bottom, a trade-off decision was made, right? Not to, at the point of first implementation, to have that elaboration done. You're going to do that, I presume, sometime in the future? Yes?
That's what we're learning at, I guess.
Okay. So, yeah, go ahead.
I think that what you're comparing here are apples to oranges. Because when you're talking about the levels in science, the high school level, or you're talking about the English or the math program at the elementary level, when you're looking at math, you're looking at a full replacement program. And so you would have a parallel where you're having the math, the teachers, which we have seven of the elementary schools here represented with our ALP teachers here, that when they're teaching math or English, they are their math teacher for the five days, for their entire math curriculum.
I understand that.
Not just, not, not going back and forth. Within science, it's an, the ALP program is written in as an enrichment. They're only getting a portion of time outside of the classroom instead of all of the time outside of the classroom. That's what made part of the implementation of a parallel, because you needed to have the collaboration that was going on between what's going on within the classroom and the amount of engagement that the students are having within the classroom and what's going on there with that time that they're outside of the classroom. And so it's that, because it's an enrichment, it made the collaboration a little bit more...
Let me ask you, let me ask you a different question, maybe, because maybe I'm operating on a bad assumption. If you're in the ALP program and you're in fourth grade in an elementary school, okay, is all of your, let me not even deal with, is all of your English done, full boat, all minutes for English as content area, done out of the classroom?
All your reading is?
Not writing.
Not writing. Just the reading.
That's, therein lies my point, right? So if you're in ALP math, is 100% of your math done out of your regular classroom?
Yes.
Okay. And so we kind of have this, I'm not even on the, this interdisciplinary thing yet, okay? I'm just on two parts, right? So one content area that we deliver in math is, is all pull-out, right? But another content area, not science, is split.
It's split between reading and writing. It's a clear delineation between...
Yeah, but, okay, but, but we don't really live in that world, right? I mean, they're not over there doing writing without reading, and they're not doing reading without, I mean, it, the world, you guys have just gone through and say, "I have an, I have an interdisciplinary approach." So the world can't have those hard lines like that. So that isn't what's actually happening. The reason I'm making that distinction is I understand the distinction. Then, then the same concept goes down to science, right? Which is, it's not really, it's science, right? Which is, oh, by the way, right, that program area is split, is what you're saying. Part of it is delivered in pull-out and, or should have been delivered in pull-out, and part of it should have been delivered in, in, in the classroom. I think the thing that, 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 I'll tell you the thing that shocked me in this. The shock thing was, somebody decided, and I don't know who, okay? And it doesn't really matter who. I'm not, I'm not on a witch hunt of who. You know, this is not a game of burn them at the stake. So it's really, how did it happen that a program, because by the way, if I'm, if I'm ever lost my mind on things board, which I think I probably have, it all runs together, is, there was an effort to kill this part of the ALP program off a number of years ago. And then some of us on the board came forward and said, "No, no, we're going to have all three levels of this thing. We're going to have math, we're going to have English, and we're actually going to have science." And it went away for a little while, and then we had to get it back, okay? Now, when it came back, right, this is going back like seven, eight years ago now.
It was back in 2012.
It was a long time ago, right? Okay, somebody tried to make it go away. We said, "No, you can't make that go away." Okay, and, but then we've had these endless debates here, is that I feel like I've had this tug-of-war more than once, which is, there's a strong gravitational pull by some educators in the system to take the ALP program and push it all back into the classroom. In the entire ten years I've been on this board, I feel like, it's like, it's like whack-a-mole on that issue. Okay, everybody keeps testing it, right? Can we just push it back in? Push it back in? Push it back in? And board members, successive boards, okay, tonight is the tenth board leadership I've been around for. That's really how long, I gotta get out of this place. I'm like, everybody needs to get rid of me. But in ten years, it's like every year we go, we go through the same. And I think what the boards have successively said is, we want a stratified educational program at the elementary level. We want it to be, ALP is for advanced learners, some percentage of kids. And we want those kids to get dedicated time by ALP teachers. I always thought that's where the board is. So if the board wants to make a very deliberate decision to change that fundamental philosophy for advanced learners at the elementary school, that has to be deliberately done, is Mr. Bernstein's point. It, I think it's Mr. Bernstein's point. It has to be deliberately done by the board. Now, if we need to have a dialogue where you guys, as the master educators, come in and say, "Hey, guys, we don't think that's the best approach, okay? What we need is you guys come in as master educators and discuss that with us before somebody goes away and implements." Because we wind up in this situation where, which is not a fun conver, it's certainly not fun for me, it's got to be downright awful for you guys, is, you know, where we're having this discussion about, we didn't communicate well, and somebody meant, "No, I'm sure," as Irene just pointed out, and I'll end my little diatribe on this. It got lost in the sauce. You know, we've changed superintendents every year for the last five years, you know, we all have to be accountable, or four of us at least have to be accountable to that. You know, the administration didn't do that, the board did that. I can see all the mitigating factors of how this stuff could get lost in this procedure policy, we're changing them, the board committee, you know, got it. Doesn't matter to me. What matters to me is this is like a fundamental core tenet of how we run our school system. And I, as a board member, I have full confidence and faith that, I've said this a hundred times, I can't stand it when the board gets into management. I, I, it's like we do, sometimes we do it. But it has to mean that, you know, when we give you guys a generalized direction, you go away and make it happen. And you have to rely on you guys to say, "Hey, you know what? I'm over here doing this thing, and I know it's not consistent with your general ideas about where you guys were going. And I gotta have you guys be the ones pulling the fire alarm." I don't want to be, I don't want to discover it through inspection. I'd much rather have it, "Hey, you know what? We're going a little different direction there. I got a proposal. Here's why I think it's better. I'm looking for your support, and maybe we'll give it, maybe we won't." This is the problem I'm having with this program change. And I don't want to be in this place, which is, just to end it on this. I don't want to be in the place where I'm hearing this from an unnamed ALP teacher as I am a runner, and I happen to bump into them on a sidewalk in front of a school somewhere, and they tell me, "Hey, by the way, did you know?" I'm like, "No, I had no idea that was happening." Or I bump into a parent in a supermarket, and they say, "Hey, it's great to see you, blah, 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 blah." Hopefully, I'm good enough to remember names, because I'm terrible with names. And, but they tell you a story, and I'm like, "Wait a second. I never saw that. That isn't what I voted on." That's the problem here. And I'm sure you guys can explain to me five reasons how this one unfolded. But my problem is, is I'm in a world where I want a, this is me, and I'll end it on this. I want a pull-out program, okay, for acceleration, because that's what I think the board supported, whether it's for the whole subject or it's for part of the subject. And I'm sure I just said something that you just went, "Oh, my God, he has no idea the implementation difficulties in doing that." I want, I want to be educated on, "That's too hard, or that's not a good decision, or here's why." That's the reason I asked for this subject to be here. I feel like I was completely surprised. And I don't know how it happened, but my real interest is not actually what happened. My real interest is, what do we do from here, and how do we get back to common ground where the board is synchronized with the administrators, so that you guys can go execute every day on behalf of all the kids we're all concerned about?
All right, Ms. Hirsch, and then Ms. Doe.
I sort of want to echo what the Peters have both said. The board should never be in the dark when a change this significant happens. We've heard time and time again from multiple boards, parents, that this is a program that's wanted and it's needed. And I don't remember the rule of the interdisc program ever, you know, pull-out ever being discussed at the board level. Parents were in the dark. They found out maybe two weeks before the start of school. I cannot tell you how disappointing it is to have to hear from parents on a regular basis that this program, which was promised our students were tested for and excited for, was removed. That should never happen. The board should never be in the dark when it comes to things like that. And the amount of time, when we've just heard our incredible educators talk about the time that they put in to create NGSS curriculum and so forth, to me, it's shocking that it wasn't considered what to do with the interdisc. Because when we brought in middle school advanced science, we were told then that it was the same curriculum. It was done in a short-term window to put that program into place. It was the same curriculum, it just moved a little quicker and went a little deeper. So to now find out, we're, you know, two years, you know, the second year of this interdisc that it's not happening is very disappointing. And I would just simply say that, you know, the other feedback that we've gotten from parents repeatedly, is that, from different schools, is that even the push-in program, because it's in classrooms now, is being implemented differently at different elementary schools. That shouldn't be the case. So it's sort of a problem. And I'd like to, you know, have a further discussion going forward. I know we're doing a review about, but this is a, this is a concern.
Just before Ms. Doe goes, you raise a really good point. I presume there's a advanced science for sixth grade?
Yes.
Okay. So you took the time to do that, but ALP was on a down list. I don't understand that. Ms. Doe.
Gosh, I can't, I'm, the lack of transparency was... I, I'm not supposed to apparently.
Yep, no button push. I'll adjust it. Keep talking.
Okay. So, yeah, the lack of transparency was...
It's frustrating. Thank you. Yes, I want that loud. The lack of transparency was frustrating, because then you lose our trust, right? And that's never a good thing. But we are where we are. I think we've all, I think the sentiment is clear. So my question to you now, and this is to you, Bonnie. Are there students who are potentially not being adequately challenged by this current curriculum?
I have looked through the preliminary data that is embargoed. And asked...
I'm sorry?
I was just explaining, we can't know this data. We are allowed to know this data and see it. But everybody else in this room is not allowed to know and see it.
But we can't say that the students that are identified for ALP science, let's just say that, performed very well. But there were also students that were our highest performers, were not identified for ALP science.
I don't think... Let me, is to, the way that, I asked myself that question, my first thing. Are there students who are on the, when I looked at the preliminary results from the NGSS, are there students who are performing in the ceiling or within the standard error of measure of the ceiling of that assessment? And the answer is yes. In the preliminary, we have students that are within that ceiling. Then, then I went and looked at, had their, were they previously been placed into an ALP-level class? And so that is, that was not consistent, is to the, the placement procedures that we have, the placement assessments that we have, and you asked about the implications. The one implication that I have, that I have been working very diligently on, is that we do not have, at this point in time, our previous placement procedures for placing into the out, pull-out for science, did not adequately predict those students who are scoring at within that ceiling of that NGSS assessment. And so what we're looking for, and this is something that needs to be done before spring...
You need, you need John Gotta from, you need a data scientist. Yes.
I've been working with the, a number of data scientists and the test develop, and a number of test developers. I know that there are some that are in development. There is one very promising one, that they're saying is going to be ready for us in January, which I'm hoping that we can have that.
So then if you figure out, well, you're, you're basically doing a program review right now, right?
Yes.
Okay. So in theory, by the time you're having all, various stakeholders go through the program, science-specific or not, but anything else, let's just be clear. You will then perhaps have a proposal for what would give you the right dataset to then place back into a pull-out, interdisc science program, just to be clear.
Yes. No. Yes, I will have, in, in the spring, when we got the full, full, the, all of the information from the external reviewers. And I met with them just last week and shared with them the, the exact same data that I'm looking at to prepare, you know, that I was looking at.
Right.
Looking at that and saying, "This is where, this is where we are, that, you know, they, they're in, they're right on board with us. They're going to help us develop, come up with a proposal and a recommendation as to what needs to be happening moving forward."
Okay.
If we decide to stick with only ninety minutes or an hour and a half of a two-and-a-half hour block and split in a similar way that what you were talking about with Peter, with reading and writing, then what does that look like? Where is that, where does that split need to happen? What needs to happen there? Is to that, this was never an intent to get rid of any type, any portion of the, the ALP science. It was to help smooth the transition for those students because of the amount of content, the difference in, and as I wrote in the report, is that there's 59% of the... the difference in, and as I wrote in the report, is that there's 59% of the, of the content standards had been moved from later grades. So to, to younger grades. We needed to be able to guarantee that those kids, that the kids were getting that information. And I must hand it to every one of the ALP teachers who are working during their prep time, their lunchtime, before and after school, out of contract, in order to do what's best for the students. This is not, this is not an optimal situation. There is a lot, a great lack of time built into their schedules for the collaboration to make this work as seamlessly as possible. They are split in that 90 minutes that they have. They're split between three classrooms? Or four? It is not, in order to optimize this model, we need time. But we also, in order to optimize a pull-out model, we need time. And staff. And that becomes a budgetary issue that, both times, is to, that, again, I have to hand it to these guys. They're here really late and they're working. They're, they're working very hard in order to make this and work the best they can for every one of the students.
Ms. Olson.
Yeah, so Bonnie, you mentioned some flaws in the placement, in the placement procedures in terms of the science. No one, no one has yet shared the data with the, with the board with redacted names with ALP, about ALP. I know I've asked for it multiple times. I think I was told that even with redacted names, that it would be even for a board, like violation of FERPA. I, I find that troubling because even just in the, in the Greenwich High School science wing, we have AP scores and student first and last names posted on bulletin boards. So I, I'm trying to disconnect. Maybe this is more for Irene, maybe this is more for Bonnie. You know, I've said before, I actually, I do not, I do not, you know, I just stand with a lot of people on the board in terms of whether the pull-out program is, is beneficial based on all their research. And I also do believe that, that ALP is a specialized education, so that anything that's talented, gifted, advanced learning falls under some sort of specialized education. Tony can comment on whether or not she would agree that that, that that would fall under special ed. But I'm just, I'm just asking for the data. I've asked, I'm like a broken record with the data on ALP. So putting it out there again for a request that hopefully it's honored at this point. And Dr. Jones, I don't know if you want to comment on whether or not you would consider, you know, whether it falls under specialized education? I think you've said it has.
Yeah. So ALP in general is not on the agenda, Megan, but I can tell you, it's actually listed in our, there's a policy which lists out all the programs. It's actually listed as a separate program. It's gifted into ALP.
No, I know that, I know that. But under, I, I know that, but I'm saying as a, from a pedagogical standpoint, a specialized, it is a, a gifted program is a specialized education. I just, just so that, that is, that is where that would fall underneath. Not necessarily, our apologies, but I was asking as a superintendent from our experience if she would see that as fall under, if she would consider that a specialized education, a gifted program.
Yeah, and it really varies from state to state across the country. When I did my special education degree, I actually did gifted as well, just because that was, that, that particular state. So generally, yes, it is viewed that way, but federal law doesn't support it in the same way.
Peter, I think you had a point for.
My point of, my point of information was, do we have on our agenda plan for this year, a topic review of ALP, the ALP program? Or is that embedded in one of the other policy items? Is it on our agenda?
It is not on our agenda.
It's supposed to be in March or April, but I don't, I don't see it on the next one.
It's not on the agenda plan. When is your review going to be?
I thought, it's every two years. It's not next year?
No, this is.
When we built the agenda plan at the end of last year with Ralph, we intended for it to come, this review to come in March or April. We don't see it on this iteration of the agenda plan, so.
Yeah, please.
April? Well, no, when you're.
Let's make sure.
Well, we knew that your review was done.
I will talk with them within the next two weeks and get a, a complete ETA. When I talked with them last week, they thought that it was, that March would be doable.
So the reason, the reason.
Then I would have it in plenty of time to go in front of you for us to analyze it and bring it to the board for March.
The reason I'm asking this question particularly, Tony, is, you know, this is like, you know, you start pulling, where'd she go? She got, she'd go to the ladies' room, probably. I, I, you pull on the string, you pull on the string on one topic and before you know it, you just, it's like, it's like pulling on the string. I, I think this topic of ALP, science and NGS implementation has now led us to the other piece, which is ALP in general. And my only, this is for the board to consider, you know, do we want to do a dive on ALP and come back and?
Well, we are, right?
Yes, we have an external review happening right now.
No, I was asking a different question. I, I was saying, yeah, what is it dedicated? Is it the right policy? Is it the right structure, what have you? As you noticed tonight, if it's like buried in a program's report, right, it's not prominent enough. It's going to be in there with 20 other things. And that may be okay.
My thought is.
But the question is, do you want to have a dedicated, do we need, maybe this is a superintendent, do we need to have a dedicated discussion about this deep dive is what is running through my mind?
It would be helpful if then at PGC that there was, or we would have to look at procedure E001 dot one three. Because that, that was the guidance that we used in working with the superintendents to make the best decision in the best interest of students.
I guess my, my pushback on that, Irene, policy turns procedure every day of the week. So you've got to go back to the policy. The policy lists this as a program. Programs need to come to the board.
And if you want us to make policies more prescriptive, we certainly can, but I guess that's.
I'm asking for your work as partners with us so that we can do it together and make the best decision for the students.
I was gonna, I was gonna say, the takeaway that you should know is that we value, and parents in the district values this program and finds, you know, finds it to be very supportive. So we're frustrated when, when we find it. So it's simply because you guys have done such good work, we feel that there is, you know, incredible support for the program.
All right. Any other comments on this? So we will wait for you to give us a date, Bonnie, when you, when you think you're going to have the report, and then we'll give you in full time, obviously, analyze it. At that time, the board could take up or refer to PGC any policy discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, the next item on our, on our agenda is the first read policies. Ms. Stowe.
Okay. Give me a second. I'm sorry. First reads, okay. Well, again, you can hear me, right? No one's listening. So Karen Hirsch, you sent me some comments. Thank you so much. And, you know, this is first read, so everyone's welcome to continue to send me comments over the next, make it weekly. And Karen, would you like me to go through yours so everyone can hear them?
Coming to the board?
That's fine. You want to do that instead?
That's been the practice, is if there's other comments.
Do you want to raise that's big, high level or no? Let me raise one. Let me raise one that's high level, just so you can all think about it and make sure you go back to me on it. 2100. And that, we actually changed this at PGC today. But we had in there that the superintendent will be responsible for developing a district staffing plan and shall review it with the board annually. And at first, we had it prior to beginning budget planning. And that is sort of impossible, as we spoke about with Tony today. Because that is budget planning in and of itself, is of course going through staffing because that represents, you know, 90% of our budget. So we had a comment to just change it to make it, to reflect that. She'll, so it'll now read, the superintendent will be responsible for developing a district staffing plan and shall review it with the board annually as part of the budget planning for the subsequent year. So that is a major, well, not a major change, but.
The one I was going to go over was.
Yes, please do.
It's 2131.
Yes, please do.
Under 2131, the superintendent of school, specific responsibilities, curriculum and program, it particularly comes to light in discussion with, this evening. Looking back at policy 9012, which has already been approved by the board, it states that the Board of Education's responsibilities include considering, revising, and adopting any changes in the curriculum. So we had recommended or, you know, suggested that, a line such as that the superintendent would suggest revisions prior to adopting changes. I don't remember the exact wording that the, the, but it should be, all of our policies should point in the same direction.
That's right.
We have one that's already been approved.
Yep. That's right. But I'll send these around, and if you guys want to have any more comments for the next meeting, just try to do it next week if you want to.
The only other one was, was for 2210. Administrative leeway and absence of board policy. It was just discussing a change in, in timing as to not necessarily the next board meeting in case there's a regular meeting, I should say. Because sometimes those are a multi-part. Making sure that the board is aware of any changes without finding out accidentally.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. What was the one in 2131 you're calling out?
That is the one that Karen just went through.
It was under curriculum and program. It says currently, the superintendent will implement and evaluate planned, ongoing, and systematic program, a program of instruction consisting with state mandates and local requirements. The superintendent will ensure the consideration of the latest research and developments in the field of learning, theory, and curriculum development. The superintendent will assist the board in setting curriculum and program priorities. However, if you look back at policy 9012, which has already been approved, I don't remember the exact date, it states that the board's responsibilities include considering, revising, and adopting any changes in the curriculum. So I had. Exactly. So this, I was suggesting that this policy needs to reflect that as well. So that suggesting wording such as the superintendent will present any suggested revisions to acrylic, to curriculum to the board prior to adopting those changes.
I guess go ahead.
All right, if there's any other changes, additions, questions about these, until we complete our committee structure, please refer them to Kathleen. All right, we will move on. The next item is the, I cannot believe this, 2021 Board of Education Meeting Calendar. Dr. Jones.
On the front page, you can see all the different notes and comments that went into creating the calendar. When you look at the actual dates, you will notice that there is not a professional development additional meeting in the middle, trying to smooth that out a little bit during the middle of budget. And the board retreat PD is listed like that so that we have the option to use those meetings for either, either professional development or a retreat. So I'll just take questions if anybody has questions.
And I just want to note in response to something someone raised earlier, we are at two full budget meetings. We do take up the budget at a third meeting. There is public comment at the second budget meeting and at the meeting where we actually take up the budget. So it's not as if we don't actually have a provision. In addition, as always, people are free to email the board at any time. Point that out for new members.
Well, and also, we had people commenting tonight on budget issues. Because it was agenda, not, I mean, there were budget commentary about the environmental trace. So if that is an opportunity for people to speak to budget items at the November meeting, even though the budget's not on the agenda, doesn't it, I'm, I'm asking, doesn't it provide an opportunity?
Yes. In fact, our budget process is basically a 12-month process, so anybody can come to any meeting where we have public comment and talk about something that's got a budgetary impact. So, good point.
Well, I was gonna say, I think the concern is simply that if there's revisions to the budget, that people have enough time to see how that would impact and have an opportunity to speak to it. I think that's the only.
Yeah. Unfortunately, the way that this operates, we will be working with the budget until that very last meeting. So there may be items that do come up at that last meeting, obviously. The superintendent gets those documents posted in advance, so people have the opportunity to read them. Whether they read them or not, I can't make my kids read most of the time, so I don't know if I can make the public do that, but it's there. Ms. Downey.
I mean, just to understand, the board retreat, professional development that you've got slated for October 3rd, I'm just trying to kind of understand, I know there was, I mean, in, I don't know if in past years it was always done, is it, kind of, what's the theory of it?
So this is what, our second year, I think, of doing board development? Basically, the idea is to use that time to do deeper dives on subjects, or if there's a particular area of focus that the board wants to hone in on. It allows for an opportunity for us to do that without a loaded agenda. Every once in a while, we've had to add something like an urgent request for money to fix boilers in the high school. But we try to keep those meetings focused on one or two topics. Those topics remain to be seen. In fact, when we get through agenda planning tonight, I'm going to ask all of the board members to look at the agenda because there is some PD coming up that basically doesn't have set topics yet. As I mentioned before, we can use some of that for orientation. But if there are items that people want to focus on, that gives us the opportunity to do it. It's a little flex in the calendar. And this comes from, we used to have work sessions. Two years ago, we had a work session, then we had a meeting. The work session ended up being a mini version of the meeting. The difference was there was no public comment. So it was almost like a dress rehearsal for the meeting. It really was not an effective way to use our time. So we've moved away from that. Any other discussion on this item? All right, well, we will take it up as an action item at our next meeting. Next up is the 2021-2022 school year calendar. Dr. Jones.
Had to jog by memory. Thank you. This calendar is just making an adjustment so that our staff, teachers would go one day extra at the end of the year so that we can be completely closed for the election next year. And this is for a couple of reasons. We have, when we do have professional development, we've worked really hard with the election board, with the police department to kind of spread out around the district because we were having challenges with parking, as you can imagine. But on the election next year, we obviously would expect that it's going to be a really big turnout. And also for safety reasons for staff, you know, we could have some safety issues just with such a large and could be contentious election. We would rather be out totally. And our teachers can take D home with their children as well.
Are we doing the action one or the, which year? I think that's.
It's actually the discussion one. This is 2021-2022. Any questions, comments? Again, we'll take that, oh, Ms. Downey.
I'm just, two questions, just as looking at it. The, the students who are talking about midterms and the stress of midterms, and we've got a professional development day coming into January, making a long, I'm, I'm just throwing it out there, is it, is that a good thing for the students at the high school, having those days off prior to midterms? Or is that, that's why I'm asking, asking the question, is it maybe that's not the time to do one if it's a problem at the high school? And there's a professional development today in May? And is that a good use of time? Yeah, just because it feels kind of, we're at the tail end of the year. If it, I don't know if you want to shift it earlier in the month or, it was just, it was just kind of jumped out.
What I can, what I can say is there's a lot of thought that goes into the calendar because there are so many different things to consider. And when you start getting into April and May, especially May, there's a lot of advanced placement testing, things of that nature that take place. And then teachers do not want to be in professional development, they want to be with their kids. So that we've had to look kind of at pre-K-12 schedule. And this, it, it was already approved and vetted last year, so I would be hesitant to make too many changes. The only thing we're recommending is the election day, just to have teachers out that day.
Any other discussion on this? All right, we will take it up at our next meeting as an action item. So moving on to our action items, we've already taken up Cardinal Field, so the next item is the 2020-2021 calendar revision. Dr. Jones.
By the way.
Mr. Chair.
2021. I'm sorry. We're on 2122 or we're on?
Right, I don't think 2122 has been approved yet. It's the first read.
Yeah, that's the first read.
Now, we're going to take up the action item, which is a change to the 2020-2021.
I have one of the only, I have one of the wrong ones in the wrong orders.
This was the one with the election, correct?
Yeah, that's why Dr. is huge.
We get a motion to, to accept the change for 2020-21. And this is the, so it would be to approve the revised calendars reflected. Mr. Chair makes the motion. Is there a second? Ms. Kowalski? All right, discussions. Discussion. So I think Dr.... I do. I'm happy to have new members being enthusiastic being here.
I'll have to talk more, Peter.
That's great.
So you get tired of my voice.
We'll never. All right. So this is the change for the election day, Dr. Jones. Is that correct? Yes. Yes, 2021. The other thing that you noted here is that Representative Camillo, I guess, anticipates resigning from his office this count, this school calendar year. There may be a primary sometime in January, so we may be making a change at some point to this calendar year.
No special election.
A special election, sorry. I know, it's got a crazy name. All right. Could be. Never know. All right. So the, so the action is to close the schools on the presidential election, and for teachers, one day later, it doesn't affect the students. Any other discussion on this item? All right. All those in favor of the motion to amend the calendar? Megan? All right. That passes eight-zero. Thank you very much. Next up is the policy items. So Ms. Stowe, if you want to make a motion first?
Sure. I move that we approve Policy number 9311. I keep doing this.
9311 is the policy about...
I'm sorry.
What's on the policy sheet?
Oh, do I have to, can I just, sorry?
The policies as noted on the cover sheet.
Yeah, thank you. Can I, I make a motion to approve the policies as noted on the cover sheet. Thank you.
I'll second that. Discussion, Ms. Stowe?
Well, I have to pull one out.
Okay. Do you want to move to amend then?
Yeah. Can I move, sorry, can I move to amend?
Yes.
And let's, can I pull, let's approve them, all of them except for 3542, 3542.33, and 3542.34. And then I can go through those?
You're going to take those separately?
Yeah, let's take them separately.
So you're moving to amend?
End your motion?
I'm going to amend my motion, sorry.
What do we, do you want to withdraw your original motion?
Withdraw my original motion, and I am now going to move that we approve all of the policies with the exception of 30, on the cover sheet, with the exceptions of 3542, 3542.33, and 3542.34.
Which we'll take up separately.
Which we will take up separately.
All right. I'll second that motion. All right. So discussion.
Okay. 30, can I take, can I talk about these now?
You can talk.
Okay. 3542, just so, Christina, all of these were presented at the last board meeting, and so all of these policies were pretty much generally accepted by everyone, and then these three policies were ones that people sort of said you have some, had some comments on. So now that's what I'm going to go through. So for Policy 3542, we took all the, most of the suggestions, I believe, of the Food Services Committee, and we added, for example, and you'll see a black line here, right, in number two, to meet or exceed, right, to consider stewardship of the environment. So these are all changes that hopefully everyone seemed happy with. The, and then it's sort of the same consistent theme for 3542.33, where we should meet or exceed, right? And then the last change, though, is 3542.34, and we got a late addition there, so it's not reflected in what you have in front of you. But the Food Services Committee and Lauren Raven actually sent me the language that they were looking for. We discussed it at Policy today, and I'd like to read it to you. Now, so if you go to 3542.34, third paragraph, we have, it is the intent of the Board that district schools take a proactive effort, that paragraph. We're going to add, we're going to end it at, as well as administrative regulation requirements for nutritional standards, period, and then add, as per Policy 2221, the superintendent may choose to propose additional guidelines to the Board based on recommendations by district and school health and nutrition committees, period.
I'm sorry, did you write that again? You took it out, how you put it down?
Yeah. Well, we, we basically are adding, per, again, language this morning from the Food Services Committee.
Put it out here.
Yep.
And then I only won't put it back?
Yes, but we're basically saying that we will, the superintendent may choose to take on recommendations of the committee. It's not...
That's not a standing committee is the issue.
That's not a committee of the Board. So here's what I'd like to do, because I think that's something that probably demands further discussion. I would like to amend your motion to remove 3542.34. We can take that up separately.
That's fine.
Is there a second on that? Ms. Kowalski? Any discussion? You were first. Any discussion? All those in favor of amending the motion to take up the new policies? Okay. So that's eight-zero. So now the motion is amended, removes 3542 and puts it separate.
3542.
3542.34, yes. Correct. All right. So why don't you cover off any of the other motions that are in here for you two, or we can take them off?
No, I think we're otherwise...
Any discussion on the motions that are before us for adoption? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting the policies with the changes made?
No.
Aye.
All right. So that's eight-zero. Thank you very much. All right. So Ms. Stowe, if you want to take up the four remainders? Michael's good. He knows four of them were taken out.
I thought it was three.
We just took out a fourth.
No, we only took out one.
Thirty-four was included in the...
Okay. Okay. There you go.
I think we might have messed up a little bit, but we're basically, 3542.34 is out.
Right.
Let's be clear. Okay. So that's going back to PGC.
Over for that to PGC.
She's going to make a really big decision.
Motion.
One girl in the committee has got it.
She's busy.
Okay.
It makes it easy. You don't have to talk.
Exactly. Maybe I'll have a vote against myself. I'm going to go half-half.
Run with it. A million dollars to every... We're going to double your pay.
Exactly.
So do you want to take up the other motion, the other policies that you removed from the amendment?
Oh, sorry. Right. Michael, do I need to add those two back?
Right now, they're outstanding.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion for us to approve Policies 3542 and 3542.33.
So the motion is to take up 3542 and 3542 point...
33.
33, because there were changes made since the Board last saw them.
And those are the changes that you said here.
And I'll second that motion. That still doesn't, doesn't deal with the one that we just removed because of the late change.
And that was point 34.
Yeah, that was point 34. So that will go back to PGC, and then that'll come back to the Board with red line, and we'll see it in a proper fashion. All right. So these two are the ones that Kathleen highlighted, they're attached to the cover sheet. Any discussion on these two? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving Policies 3542 and 3542.33? Raise your hands. It's all sent, so that passes. Eight-zero. Thank you. All right. Next up is transfers, our interim chief operating officer, Dr. Jones.
Thank you very much. Oh, my God. We had two transfers tonight. The first one, and the notes are very good if you look below for the explanation, to cover the settlement for a parent who's transporting their own student. So it's transferring money so that we can have that settlement. And the one below that has to do with a software rethink license, which was accidentally left out of the budget for this current year.
Can somebody make a motion first, and then we'll get to discussion? Motion to approve the transfers. So Ms. Downey makes a motion to approve the transfers. Is there a second? Ms. Stowe? All right. Discussion. Mr. Chair, you wanted to ask what the license was for? Mr. Chair asked what the license was for.
And I'm going to defer to Ms. Ford.
It's rethink. It has multiple purposes. One is it provides online learning modules for paraprofessionals. It's also a data management system for students who are engaged in direct teaching, discreet trial teaching. And it also has parent support modules in there, and it has lesson plans for students with more significant disabilities.
Okay. So I've got a question about the first transfer. So we're taking money from transportation for field trips and the settlement of claims and judgments and putting this into paid transportation. The transportation for field trips, isn't that going to affect or related to actually transport students to field trips?
It's all transportation money right now. I think last year we had some excess money left there because we had fewer students who required specialized transportation for field trips. Sometimes we have to run additional buses if kids need wheelchair-accessible buses. So we had money left over last year. We think we can make the transfer. Just so you know, the cost of a bus, a driver, and a monitor is approximately $605 a day. We have a student who cannot be transported with any other students, and his parent has agreed to transport him himself. So it's, it's a savings to us. We're taking somewhat of a risk on decreasing transportation for field trips, but based on our past practice, we think we can manage it.
Mr. Chair, please.
Just out of curiosity, why is it this student can't be transported with anybody else?
He has significant challenging behaviors. He's in and out of district placement. He needs, in order to be safely transported, he can be the only student in the bus.
Said another way, not for his safety, for the safety of other students.
Well, both. If there were other kids on there and they, I don't want to get into the details of the student, but...
Yeah, I don't want you to get into the details of the student. I mean, anonymize it. I, I'm just more interested in understanding how we have it. Because 605 bucks a day, and there's 180 school days.
It comes out to $109,000 if we were to provide his own bus.
Ms. Kowalski?
So can I, I'm just going to ask a stupid question. Why, how is this, why do we pay for this?
He's in and out of district placement.
Okay.
Hence, we need a special education review.
So this came down because there was a litigation against the town, and this is how we settled, or this is...
He's, this particular student has some very challenging behaviors. He's in out-of-district placement. We tried to transport him on a van or a bus with other kids, and we couldn't do it. So we would have to, he has to have his own van slash bus, whatever is available, a monitor on that bus. His parents said he has a very good relationship with a caregiver. They will drive him. It's an arrangement that seems to benefit both of us at this point in time, but it does require a transfer because we're paying the parent instead of paying the bus company.
Yeah. Do we have, what kind of documentation do we have in connection to...
Push that.
Sorry. I'll get used to that. What kind of documentation do we have with respect to the, to the parents or counsel to the parents as to that they're going to be covering the, they're going to provide transportation and this savings?
We have a settlement agreement.
We do.
And does it forward risk living stuff?
It's been worked on by both attorney, our attorney drafted it and sent it to the parents, and they've agreed to it.
I'll say the same thing I say every time we transfer money within and to special education. I get very, because come up, when we get to the, to the monthly financial, I get very concerned that we have these additional expenses that pop up, miss software, transportation, where we're starting to claim from other budget lines. And at some point, it extends out beyond claiming from special education budget lines. So I guess I, this is my usual caution, please watch what we're doing, be amazingly thoughtful in our budget planning, and let's see if we can minimize these transfers.
I will take full responsibility for the rethink. That was an oversight on our part that it did not get put into the budget. The other, it's, things like that are going to happen when you plan a budget eight months out before we even know who some of the students are. So we do our best to try and maintain within the budget lines if we can.
Understood. All right. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor of approving the transfers?
I thought you were saying, sentiment that, you know, Ms. Ford says she takes full responsibility, but it's, a lot of times it's after the fact, here we are adding, you know, I mean, the transfers is, I mean, it's obviously necessary, but it's, it's after the fact, trying to catch up and in an area where we're already extremely over budget. So I just, I like to echo your frustration.
Okay. So all those in favor of accepting the transfers? All right. Megan, how do you vote?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. So it passes eight-zero. Thank you. So next up is the monthly financial report. Dr. Jones.
And I'll just start by just looking at the first page, obviously, that gives you the different exhibits that are inside. And I'm going to assume that, I think the Board has probably already looked at this. So I'll flip to the next page, which is actually the status of the open projects. And then there's, below that is where I think, Mr. Bernstein, you were just referencing, the preliminary data suggests that special education instruction out of district tuition will exceed the budgeted amount by 420,000. That's where we are as of right now. And, you know, we'll be working to rectify that as we go through the year. On the next page, you're just seeing all the staffing. Really, there has not, you're not seeing a lot of change from the last time you saw this report for the staffing and budget report. I'll just note that down on the bottom with the positions, where you see that point three, some of those adjustments, those are actually accounting adjustments, where we have tried to in the budget this year, make sure we're putting everybody in the right categories. So those are primarily accounting adjustments. I'm going to keep moving him. Sorry. Okay. I'm going to, one of the questions that I've had, and I know some of the new Board members were wondering, it's at the very back, and this is all of our projects that you've wanted to know, especially as we're in the middle of budget and looking at all of our capital planning. And just to note, and I'll try to get everybody, every few months, one of these in color because it's a lot easier to see what's completed. But I'll just, you can just note that the number of projects that have been completed that Rory O'Donnell and Dan Watson have really worked on. And I will say, when you look over on the right-hand side and it looks like there's a gap, usually that's just because it's the title of the section. But it's, we are really getting a lot of these projects completed, and we're asking for the money that we know we can complete the projects. And again, keep in mind, some of these are intended to be multi-year because you can only do work primarily when children are not in the building.
Tony, at what point do you take them? When they're complete, do they come off? Like, how long do they sit there in the complete stage before you remove them?
Yeah. I think this was a newer report for us. In my mind, it would be at the end of this year. We would remove everything that's complete, and then our new projects that get approved would show up on here. But I'm not the real person in this job, so...
All right. So can we get a motion to accept the financial report, and then we'll do discussion? So a motion to accept? Ms. Downey, is there a second? Sure. Mr. Kelly? There we go. Sure, Mr. Kelly, there you go, we're gonna get you on the record here. Okay, discussion. Okay, so I will be the broken record that says, we added four hundred thousand dollars last year to this budget for special ed out-of-district placement overages, so that means that we are now eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars over where we were the previous year. That is troubling to me, that this trend continues to go up, and it makes me question, and how are we not able to serve these students in our district? And it goes back to, how are we delivering our programming, how are we supporting our students? I have for agenda planning, a special education update, because I think it's, it's time, so I'm just signaling that right now. But in terms of other things in the budget, by the way, capital, amazing closeout work, I, please pass on to Dan and Laura, even though she's gone, that they've done a yeoman's task, because what they inherited was not always easy to understand, they've instituted the governance from Bloom-Shapiro as best it's already in place, but they really have closed out projects that have just lingered on for years, I give them a lot of credit. All right, any other discussion on the financial and staffing report? Peter?
Tony, just so I can put this in context, and it's just where I come from, right? When, I'm gonna take as an article of faith that budgeting is done well, okay? Budgeting is not a precise, it's not precise, but, budgeting does well, it just, as a general rule, it, it doesn't have this kind of variance in it, and I realize you're trying to get your arms around every part of this, you know, thank you for all the detail you provided the other day in the budget committee meeting, and I know you're digging in and really looking at everything, and I very much appreciate that. My, my barometer is, is that I'm used to managing, you know, very large budgets, and doing it for twenty-five years, there's actually a phrase, it's called out of control, okay? Out of control in popular language means, you know, everything's out of control, that's not what it means in accounting language. What it means is, in accounting language, is it's something not as nefarious, it's just, it's not in line with what is planned or predicted, and, or said another way, it's in budgeted, and you look at the variances. This budget line for special education, it is such a large part of our budget, that's the first thing that catches our attention, it's a large percentage item of our budget, and it has a variance to it that is too large. So in accounting speak, and I don't want anybody to do it, you know, in accounting speak, it's out of control, it's not within control. So what it tells me is, is every time we've dug into this, and you're not the first one, is, it's not an acceptable answer to say, oh, other people around us, other districts around us have an out-of-control budget too, therefore it's not abnormal, so just, it's okay, Greenwich. And that's been the answer, and I, it's like folklore in, in, in education, and Kelly, I don't care what any other district is doing, I think we ought to be better at that in being able to plan and control our budgets. So if, you know, somebody else, Darian or what have you, who's got a problem, it's not an okay barometer for me. The reason I'm saying this is, I just want to underline this, this is why I'm asking for a special education review, because when I see, based on my experience, a program that has this much swing and variance, blowing holes in budgets all over the place, usually it's not as simple as, oh, there was a one cataclysmic event, and to Mr. Bernstein's point, it's happening with a frequency that tells you for sure it's not a particular cataclysmic event. I think we gotta go back and look at this program, peel it back, look at it operationally, and figure out what we can do operationally that will reduce the incidence of these kinds of variances. Some of them are gonna happen because it comes with the territory, like, as, I didn't ask the question about this last student, like, the one with a hundred and nine thousand dollars, were they in our system last year, right? Let's say they weren't, they show up now, it's a problem now, it's not something somebody's planning for, I understand that stuff's gonna happen. My problem is, it's happening with a frequency, and at a dollar level, that's too big for me, and it, I don't want to beat up on anybody about it, but I just want to underline, somebody's gotta get a grip on this, and we gotta get all the help we can to Mary and her staff, and the other staff, and the finance staff, and whatever help they need from wherever we can get it, because to have, this is, I don't remember what it was last year, last year, two years ago, I can remember sitting in Central Middle School, it was like one point five million dollar swing, that's a huge number, and, you know, now this one, add this one in, and I'll end of rant, is, I guess this is an eight hundred K swing, that's, I don't even, what is that? That's like ten teachers? I mean, this stuff matters, so, I'm not beating up on you, and I don't want to take it up as beating up on you, and I don't want to take it up as beating up on the special education staff, because I know they've, I can't imagine what they deal with every day, but we have to all get in the boat together, lifting the foot up on this thing, and for me, it's urgent. It's urgent. Dr. Jones?
I, I think special education, and I know you don't want to hear it, but this is the trend that is happening, it's happening around the country, and when we have thirty-eight children, and eight of them never attended our school system, and we have to play for that outplacement, if those eight children happen to be a hundred and twelve thousand per child, which is pretty much the average, you're already close to a million dollars, so, that's not very many children in a system between, you know, over nine thousand children, so, and that, that is realistic and happens. Now, can we continue to look at programming and operations? Absolutely. You know, are there programs we could build, I think, at our seminar task force this last week, they brought up, do we have an autism program? You know, the parents shared that with us, and that's something I'm sure that this committee task force will continue to really look at. Are there some programs that we could add? Sure, but I think the variance that we're seeing, at least the four hundred and twenty, can be four children, and it's, it's not a huge variance, even though it feels like it, and because we're dealing with children, we're not dealing with a product, you can't pre-plan for that, and, and that's the hard thing about schools, being a people business, and especially in special education, because it's rolling all year long, you have new children who are qualifying, you have children who are moving into the system.
Let me just say, I'm just saying this, all I want to do is budget, so that, and a good budget would say, because you can look at the trend, okay, if over the last five years, there were ten kids who came to the system unpredicted, okay, then guess what you should do? You should budget for ten kids, and then if at the end of the year, we don't need to spend that money, but to budget the other way, and, you know, I'm gonna ask the same question, I mean, Tony, I get this part, I, there are solutions to this, and if we wind up giving, I'd rather be giving the money back than going, oh my God, what, what am I doing now? It means we're doing something not right in our budgeting, and I agree with you a hundred percent. I'm still stymied by five million dollars for thirty-five kids out of district, okay, and settlements, okay? Because thirty-five kids at a hundred grand is three point five, how did we wind up with two million dollars in settlements? So, you know, there's indicators, and I, I understand there's variance here, I'm just saying, I think in Greenwich, with the financial brains we've got in this town, we can figure out how to budget in a way that other districts would make rookie mistakes on their budgets, so we wouldn't have, have this. We have to, we have to have either more contingency funds, or whatever, so that these big swings don't happen, and if we wind up giving it back at the end, or we wind up using it on something else, let's go have that conversation with the BET, can you give us two million dollars if your special ed's sequestered? So we don't have to ask for it, we don't have to transfer for it, and whatever, there are, there are innovations we can, we can do, and meanwhile, to your point, looking operationally at, are there some ways we can mitigate when a new kid comes in, and they have a special challenge, and it doesn't always wind up in and out of district, and what have you, those are all the great things to do, and I, I don't want to, I guess, I don't want to take this on beating up on you, unfortunately, I have to talk to you as the super, because that's the way our system works, I realize you're here, and you're working super hard, and I'm glad you're here, and thank you very much for everything you do every day, it's just, we have got with some urgency to get a grip around this, because it's the thing that really swings in our budget and really screws it up.
And I think you're kind of hitting on something that is unique in Greenwich, that I think bodes a bigger conversation, and that is excess cost. So excess cost in Connecticut is meant exactly for this reason, but we don't get it, and so technically, in the middle of the year, if the board wanted to, you know, make that case, and the attorney would tell you, we should be able to go and ask for that, and so, in the middle of the year, we go and ask the town for our excess cost, we apply that to special education in the way that it's intended in the state of Connecticut, it would definitely help offset this, but we don't do that in Greenwich.
Ms. Hirsch.
Can I jump in?
Oh, sorry, Karen first, and then we'll get you, Megan.
Well, I was just gonna say, I know that this has come up in discussion every time we look at the budget, and see that there's a significant overage, and I understand that the budget happens early, and you never know when a student will be coming into the district that might need outplacement, but I think what would really help in making sure is, how we understand that these budget changes and increases happen, in the middle of the year, having the opportunity to see some of the settlements, and why the students are being placed out of district, if there are things, for instance, for students with dyslexia, that we can have programs that we can build in, or like you were suggesting, that the task force was discussing something about autism, it might help us have a better understanding of why these funds are happening, and what we can do within our schools to help support students within our own schools.
Megan.
So I, I also agree that some costs are definitely out of our control, you know, people who've been to the district, and are outplaced already, you know, that's a cost that we have to absorb, so some are out of our, out of our control absolutely, but there also are costs, and I think Peter Scher mentioned before, you know, a lawsuit that ended up costing, you know, one million something, and I think it's just less expensive for us to comply with the law in the first place, so there is an issue, because we hear over and over again of what I'd be calling a special education crisis, and I think we do have a mismanagement of the program and violations of IDEA, and, so, I think that we need to, this is a huge number, and as Peter Bernstein said, it, we're actually already at eight hundred something thousand, so it's, it's, it's not, it's not something we can sit with, I think, yes, training, et cetera, but this is, this is, this is a bigger problem, I think that we really need to, I mean, it's, it's time to do something more drastic, because I think that it's much cheaper to comply with the law from the get-go, and as we've heard, and we continue to hear, that's, that's not always happening in our schools right now, so something more drastic needs to be done.
All right, any other discussion on this item?
So, Megan, this is Karen, I would echo those comments, and that's why I think doing a deep dive into the operational components of how we are effectively looking at special ed and applying special education to our students, I, I think we can unravel the, you know, unwrap the onion on this one to come up with a better solution. I do think, and I want to just extend on Megan's comments, I think the part of the issue, and I'm not saying it's, you know, the total solution, because we do have those students that come in, but I think we need to take a look at whether it's likely cheaper to provide the special education to the students that need them, rather than to fight it, and I think we need to look really hard on how we're applying the special education to that particular student, and that should be part of that deep dive, because I, there's got to be some savings there.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, so all those in favor of accepting the monthly financial and staffing reports? Ms. Olson?
No.
Okay, so that passes seven-one. All right, so that brings us to the last item on our agenda, which is agenda planning. I've got special education, we'll talk with the superintendent about the timing for that, Cardinal Stadium, obviously, as soon as the committee can get together, but we've got a placeholder as early as possible, and I'll let you all know if we need to schedule a public session, so that the plans can come out. The other one was an ALP update, again, somewhere in the March-April timeframe, based off what we, feedback we get back.
It was done, it was done.
Any, any other discussion items for agenda planning? Mr. Scher?
This is interrupted me personally. Is it possible we could put in place some guidelines for all of our regular speakers? I know we have a limit for public comment, for other people who are regular speakers to us, could we give them a, a time guideline? It seems to, in some cases, eat some time.
So my suggestion would be to ask PGC to take a look at that, because it's based on policy, there's no set limit for those speakers, but maybe that.
I'm just wondering if a gentle, if we could.
We certainly can give a gentle nudge to the people that are in the room.
I'm not worried about the PTA, there are some others that can wax poetic, I'm the worst of them anyway.
I was gonna say, you mean yourself?
So Peter, I'm gonna give you an egg timer?
No, but I mean, it's like, you know.
I'm happy to give it to PGC, Peter Scher will be given five minutes.
Can you, I can give me a little flipper thing?
I'm gonna get you an egg timer, I'll get you one, all right?
You give me the thirty seconds.
It just takes us, it just takes us so long to get to the substance of the meeting with all this stuff that's at the beginning, and it, you know, I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity for additional economy.
So it's an interesting thought, and on top of that, I would suggest we possibly look at what the other boards in town do about their public comments, P&amp;Z, for instance, takes their comments basically midstream for each item, rather than all the comments up at the front. It's really odd when their meetings go to 2:00 AM, and they basically expect the public to be their comment, but, anyway, you know, I don't know, maybe there's other models we can look at as well. All right, but noted, anything else for agenda planning? No?
Who's the next one?
Oh, yeah, so we need somebody to make a motion to adjourn. Joe, would you like to? I know, Joe, what's your meeting? Mr. Kelly makes a motion to adjourn, Ms. Hirsch seconds, all those in favor of adjourning, we are adjourned, thank you.